I'd like to call to order the City Council regular meeting of Tuesday, March 5. All council members are here except the mayor, who is going to be a little bit late. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, so, meeting agenda approval. Does anyone have anything they want to pull from the consent agenda? Councilmember Zorn?
Yes, I would like to pull, sorry about that, AB 19-032.
Does anyone else have anything they want to pull? Okay, moving on. We have special presentations. The first by Bothell Kenmore Chamber of Commerce. Andrea Schaefer and Brittany Caldwell. Yeah, and I think-
I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Dour. We also have, and you can't see it because it's not showing up on your monitor.
Oh, public engagement. No, that's totally my fault. I just skipped it. Okay, upcoming public engagement opportunities and events. The March Against Hunger food drive, March 1 through 31. Food and dry good bins have been placed at City Hall, Police Municipal Court, Downtown Fire Station 42, and the Bothell Operations Center. Collections will be delivered to the Maltby Food Bank. Bothell Shoreline's Board, open house and public hearing, March 11th from 5 to 7 in Bothell City Hall for the Shoreline Master Plan or Master Program Periodic Review. Vision 2050 Open House, March 18th from 4 to 6 p.m. in the Police Community Room. The Puget Sound Regional Council will be seeking comments on the draft supplemental environmental impact statement for Vision 2050. WashDOT Open House, March 18th, 5 to 7 in Bothell City Hall. I-5 and SR, or I-405, SR 522 vicinity to SR 527 express toll lane improvement project. Repair Cafe, March 23rd from 12:30 to 3:30 in the Bothell Library. This is a free event and provides experienced repair people that will work on your items by repairing or mending them if they can. For more info, call 206-477-4481, or tom.watson@kingcounty.gov. I have so many things I could bring to that. Okay, moving on. Sorry, I skipped over that. Special presentation, Bothell Kenmore Chamber of Commerce.
Hopefully, all of you know, I am Brittany Caldwell. I am the Executive Director of the Bothell Kenmore Chamber of Commerce. And here with me today is Andrea Schaefer from Bothell Physical Therapy, who is our new Board of Directors Chair. So, the reason for our visit today is just to take an opportunity to remind everybody about who we are, what our chamber does for the community, and ways that we are currently partnering with the city of Bothell. So, a little bit about our history, in case you're not familiar, we are a fairly young Chamber of Commerce. We grew out of a downtown association of just 25 members. We then became the Greater Bothell Chamber of Commerce in 2003, began operating in '04, and then just last year went through a rebranding process to become the Bothell Kenmore Chamber of Commerce. So, you can see our founding guidelines and a reminder that we have no affiliation with the U.S. Chamber, but all of our membership dues stay local right here in this community. So, we are a membership-based organization of local businesses. Our mission statement is to champion the prosperity of the Greater Bothell and Kenmore area and quality of life for its community through collaborative leadership, member business advocacy, and member-driven services. So, we, as you can see there, hopefully, the old logo is familiar too, but we were the Greater Bothell Chamber, and as I mentioned, rebranded recently to the Bothell Kenmore Chamber. So, this wasn't a merger, but rather a rebranding to better reflect what we were already doing to support both communities. So, our chamber staff, we are growing. There are five of us, myself, Marita Colburn, Eve Livingston, Lynn Lynch, and Elizabeth Tackett. You may have seen Mike Rue around here recently and at other council meetings. He was our board chair for the past two years, and also welcoming Andrea Schaefer in the board position for this year. We have several board members. We actually have quite a large board. You'll see many of the representatives here in the room today. So, ranging from both leaders of the City of Kenmore, as well as the City of Bothell, leaders from both campus. You can see Dr. Eric Murray on the list, Kelly Snyder, and lots of our dynamic small business community as well. Our membership is growing and growing and growing. So, I mentioned, we started with just 25 businesses downtown. We now have, we're getting closer and closer to 400 business members there. So, membership growth is one of our highest priorities because we want to be inclusive and really represent the entire business community. Our membership makeup, so we do have a large percentage of the 0 to 10 employees. Our membership dues are based on the size of a business and the number of employees that they have. One of our second-largest groups is actually the larger employers, so those with 50 or more employees. So, we have really a diverse membership of both the small and the medium and the large-sized businesses. Some of our largest supporters are what we call our patron members, which you can see a list here, as well as our community partners. So, again, we are thrilled to have the City of Bothell and the City of Kenmore on that list, also Community Transit, who I see in the room here, and our educational institutions, healthcare, a wide range of supporters. We do a lot to support businesses in terms of advocacy. So, we are a member of the Coalition of Chambers on the east side, so ranging all the way down in Renton up to our Bothell community. We gather to support the businesses throughout our area. We also have a Business Advocacy Committee, and we believe it's very important that we have continued open conversation with city staff and council members of both cities. So, we have three elected delegates who represent our community at the Coalition meetings on a monthly basis. You'll see Kelly Snyder from Utah-Bothell, Erin Buckin from Hub International, and Matt Eisenhower from Chick-fil-A. So, again, they, we do create a legislative agenda each year. And, for example, we were just in Olympia for Chamber Day, and we met with each of the representatives from both the 1st and the 46th District. And so, we are down there making sure that they know about our priorities. And, of course, transportation was at the top of our list, followed by items such as condo liability reform and funding for a new academic building on campus and other issues that are directly impacting Bothell businesses. We also occasionally take endorsements on different things. So, in the last year, our Board of Directors did vote in favor of supporting the Bothell Public Safety Levy and Bond. So, we did articulate that endorsement throughout our communications. We also provided the opportunity to have Jennifer and her team present at our general meeting and to really reach out to the 80-plus business leaders that come to those meetings. We recently, as you know, moved to Main Street, and we are so thankful for the city's support. I know that Mike recently expressed that sentiment, but we wouldn't be there without you, and we want to thank you. It's an honor to be the Visitor Center for the City of Bothell. We also put on a ton of events, which I think sometimes are most the thing we are most familiar for, but we have lots of business luncheons, general meetings, ribbon cuttings for new businesses, and, of course, the large community events that we support as well, such as Beer Festival and the Bothell Block Party and Brew Fest. The business luncheons, we try to have dynamic speakers for our business community. So, for example, last September, we had representatives from Community Transit and Sound Transit talking about all the transportation changes coming to our community. So, the speakers vary greatly, and, of course, you are all welcome to attend any of those anytime. Our ribbon cutting events, we helped 13 businesses open their doors in the last year, and we are so grateful for the City Council members, as well as staff members that come and support those businesses. It's very important for us to show a welcome into our community, and I know that Deputy Mayor Davina Dour has been particularly engaged in those, and we appreciate whenever people can make the time to come to those and say hello. We do partner with the University of Washington Bothell to put together the Bothell Block Party and Brew Fest, and, of course, the Bothell Beer Festival that was hosted in the garage. So, those events are, just continue to be very successful. The community continues to gather for those, and it's a pleasure to be able to put those together. Not only do we believe very strongly in gathering community and getting people together, but another reason that we put on events is to augment our income. So, we have one of the lowest dues for a chamber our size in the entire region, and we like to keep it that way. We want it to be accessible to businesses of all sizes, and so, we do find creative ways to offset that by doing events, like the ones I've mentioned previously. We also believe that it's incredibly important to give back. So, we, for example, give a nonprofit discount of half off all of our dues, no matter the size of the business. So, we have 52 nonprofit members. Other chambers in the area have more than 10, 15. It's significant to our community, and we think that it's important to have a diverse Chamber of Commerce that represents all types of business organizations. We also supported Mary's Place with our Auction Fund in Need, giveaway scholarships every year, and supported the North Shore Senior Center with our Chili Fest event. We did launch a new website. I hope you have all checked it out. We now have a translation service. It's all the little things that make a huge difference. We have a great calendar of events, of all kinds of community events, not just chamber activities, also a business directory. We hope that the community is utilizing these services. And we added this year the About Bothell and Kenmore section. So, this is a whole new section that talks about our local attractions, our lodging, our shopping, our retail, and we think it's very complimentary to the efforts that are being done by Explore Bothell. We also have a business resource page that's more dynamic than ever before, that allocates and talks about all the resources available to our local businesses. We are going to be working on workshops, so not only, in addition to all of our events that are available to our members, we want to offer workshops that delve even deeper into different topics. And, of course, we want to continue to grow our membership. So, we're working really hard to reach out to businesses in the Kenmore area, the Canyon Park area, and we want to be as inclusive as possible. So, with that, I'm going to pass it to Andrea for another brief announcement. Thank you. So, I'm really honored to be here and to be able to speak, but one of the things that I get to do is just to give you guys a great big thank you for the things that you help us do so that we can support our community members and our chamber members. So, we, you supported us with the Visitor Center, you support us with community events, you let us have the City Council Candidates Forum, and you support us with the State of the City Bothell Chamber Luncheon. And over here, we had over 170 business people there because they are interested in the city, they want to hear what the city has to say. There's our mayor. And then, what's really cool is to be able to have so many of the council members there supporting our businesses and showing that we have a really strong partnership in supporting each other. So, just another way that the community is able to get updates from the city are the general meeting updates. You guys are able to participate and do at the Business Advocacy and Bothell Downtown Action Committees. We have representation on our Board of Directors with the Economic Development Manager, Genie. You guys attend grand openings and ribbon cuttings. You have regular city announcements in the Chamber Newsletter, and you are one of our community partners, and we are just so grateful for that. So, thank you.
Super, thank you so much. That growth is really impressive. I didn't know those numbers, and I really appreciate the nonprofit membership. I think that's fantastic. Does anyone else have any comments? Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you. I just want to say that you really make a difference for the business community, and I really want to thank you, Brittany and Andrea, because it makes a huge difference that you have their voice, that you are their voice, and I think that's really important. I want you to know that I wrote the bylaws way back when.[854.12][854.12](laughter) I was one of the founding members of this chamber, and I'm very proud of the progress you've made since then. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you so much. Okay, next up is a Community Transit update about the SWIFT Green Line project. Mr. Emmett Heath.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Emmett Heath. I serve as the Chief Executive Officer at Community Transit. First of all, let me say, we really enjoyed working with Brittany to help sponsor the State of the City event that the chamber put on. We left being absolutely amazed at the attendance and the quality of the event, so happy to partner with you on that. Nice job. The last time we were here to talk to this council, it was to tell you what our plans were for expanding public transportation services that would affect the City of Bothell. This evening, I'm here with some colleagues to report progress on the completion of a major milestone in those expansion programs. Our six-year implementation plans include $1.4 billion worth of investment in Snohomish County between now and 2024. Of that, $1.4 billion, $350 million is a capital development program. One of my colleagues here with me tonight is June DeVal. June will be presenting to you the completion of our SWIFT Green Line this evening. June is also responsible for a majority of that $350 million worth of capital program implementation over the next five years. Another colleague here with me tonight is Jam Young Doergi. In the strategic framework for our agency, one of, we have six, what we call business, fundamental business priorities. One of those is civic engagement. Jam Young is here tonight representing that part of our staff who conducts our civic engagement program throughout the county and, in particular, works closely with Bothell in that regard. So, please welcome June and Jam Young. We're pleased to be here, and June is going to take about 15 minutes and update you on the completion of our latest BRT line, the SWIFT Green Line.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. Over the years, I've come here several times to talk about us building the SWIFT Green Line. And tonight, I get probably the most fun of all because we start up in 19 days. So, we're inviting everyone to come and join us for a grand opening on March 24th at McCollum Park and Ride for the SWIFT Green Line. So, just a little bit of a reminder about what SWIFT Bus Rapid Transit is. Our blue line, our green line actually represents an extension of the network. Our blue line started in November of 2009, so it's been running almost 10 years, and it's the highest ridership route that Community Transit provides. Almost 20% of our daily riders are just on that one route. The green line, being our second line, provides that connection. So, the green line will run from the Canyon Park Business Area, from Canyon Park Park and Ride, along SR 527 up to 132nd, across Airport Road, and to a new transit center at the north called the Seaway Transit Center. As I said, when we started SWIFT in 2009, it was the first bus rapid transit in the state. And some of the unique characteristics, we have very clear design principles. The overarching one, though, being that we're trying to achieve 10-second dwell times. And what that means for us is when a bus is stopped at a station, it's there about 10 seconds. All the doors board, customers pay their fares at the platform before the bus gets there. All the doors open, people board and deboard, and the bus continues on its way. So, it's really important to us that we try to minimize any disruptions on traffic, but also to keep our customers moving. Customers don't want to just wait in a bus, they want to be moving. We do what's called overlay BRT. A lot of other systems will do replacement BRT. So, when they bring a bus rapid transit into a corridor, they eliminate the local service. We do not. We continue our local service and overlay BRT on top of that. That gives us a chance to stagger our stations a little further away. So, our stations are about 3/4 of a mile to a mile apart because we do continue to provide service under that with local service. But, again, it keeps our bus rapid transit moving. And we also provide 10-minute frequencies all day long in both directions. We use dedicated vehicles. The SWIFT vehicles are very recognizable for customers when we only use SWIFT vehicles on the SWIFT route. We have features inside our vehicles to help, again, make those 10-second dwell times, to make it easy for customers to board and deboard, things like onboard bike racks. So, a customer with a bicycle just simply, just wheels their bicycle into the bus, we have racks there in, inside. We also have space outside of those racks where if a customer boards and all three of the racks are full, they're allowed to stand with their bikes. And bike ridership on the SWIFT route is one of the highest in our system. Almost 8% of the people who board SWIFT are doing so with a bicycle. On the, well, on my right, you can also see what we call passive restraint for wheelchair customers. So, our wheelchair customers come into the bus, they back up to this board, and they put on the brakes to their chair. They don't need any further restraint. So, it gives our wheelchair customers a little more independence, and it also takes, again, less dwell time. The bus is not sitting there three to five minutes while we're trying to secure the chair. The chair is already secured. Our stations are pretty unique, but they are identical at every SWIFT station. So, we chose not to go with a kit apart. We have identical stations everywhere that we have a station so that a customer knows immediately when they're at a SWIFT station. There's no confusion. Our stations are placed in strategic locations where we have a lot of origin and destination where people want to go. The station itself has a lot of features, so the off-board fare collection. We have both ticket vending machines for customers who want to pay with cash, and we also have Orca readers so that a customer who has an Orca card can simply tap their card and board the bus. As I said, the green line runs from Canyon Park all the way up to the Seaway Transit Center. And so, the Seaway Transit Center at the northern end is directly across from Boeing. And this is kind of when we started. It was just raw land, just dirt, and today, it looks a little bit more like a transit center. We have shelters going up, we have a mechanical building, we have our landscaping in. But this slide in particular is really important in that the Seaway Transit Center is a hub for all the public services in the area. We will have community transit routes, we'll have our SWIFT route, it's the northern terminus for SWIFT, but we'll also have other community transit routes, Everett Transit Routes, King County Metro Route, a Sound Transit Route, and a Boeing employee shuttle so that all these services can come together. Employees who are going to Boeing can simply just transfer to the shuttle and be taken on the Boeing campus. Also, as part of this project, we did a bit of a widening of the approaches to I-5 at 128th. That was a hugely congested area, so in each direction, we put in a new lane. Eastbound, it's a bus-only lane, and westbound, it's a BAT lane, bus and business and transit access lane. But in both cases, we have what's called a queue jump. So, the bus actually pulls to the head of the stop bar. It triggers the signal so that we get about eight seconds of green time for the bus to start across the intersection before the rest of the general purpose traffic. The widening project was actually done in phases. We opened up the eastbound phase last April. We opened the westbound phase this past March. So, our regular buses have been able to utilize this feature. And for us, it's really made a big difference in the reliability of service. Doesn't necessarily make things faster, but it does make it more reliable. Before utilizing these queue jumps, it took a community transit bus between 3 and 18 minutes just across the interchange. That has now reduced to 3 to 8 minutes, depending on time of day. So, there's been a really significant increase in the reliability, which in turn really helps our customers. It helps them rely on the service. And then, we have the station construction. So, we've been building the stations all along the corridor at 15 intersections, most notably right outside Payne Field, where commercial service just started yesterday. So, a customer could take a SWIFT bus directly to the Payne Field service, walk into the terminal, and catch their plane. Our SWIFT coaches, in order to start the Green Line service, we ordered 18 more coaches, all of which are here and are ready for service. And the overall project was a $73 million project. We were able to obtain a federal small starts grant for $43 million. We have several state grants and then a little bit of local money. And as I said, the service opens on March 24th. Now, we're in the phase now that we're starting to do our outreach, and I have a video if it will run, but if it doesn't, you can go to our website to see the video. So, some of our outreach right now is we are going to businesses and residential apartment complexes along the corridor. In order to promote the service, let people know that it's happening. Next week, we will be doing a mass mailing to 65,000 people in the corridor. We're going one mile on either side of the entire corridor. And in the mailer that goes out next week, there will be a ride-free pass, inviting people to come and ride SWIFT. It will only be good on SWIFT, but it will be good for the first full week, so from March 24th to March 31st, and just inviting people to come and give it a try, see what they think. Come and enjoy the SWIFT service. And I think with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I just wanted to thank you. You guys have been really great partners with Bothell and provided really great service. And I hope that the Sound Transit BRT is looking at your example because I think you've done some really smart things. I would never ride a metro bus with my bike, only because the scare factor of having to load it on the front of the bus and what if I don't know what to do, and it's so easy to just bring your bike onto one of your buses, so that's really cool. Does anybody else have any comments or questions? Thank you so much. We're really excited for the opening. Okay, next is, the mayor arrived. Staff briefing on the WashDOT I-405 North End Project update by Sherman Gong.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Sherman Gong here, City Transportation Planner. Just wanted to take a few minutes tonight to brief you on the WashDOT I-405 improvements being planned right now in our area. The plans right now are considered the first phase of the North End Project of 405. They will include extending the express toll lanes in both directions from just south of SR 522 up to SR 527. And that will include two new direct access ramps, one at SR 522 and one at SR 527, and the related and associated improvements with the direct access ramp at 527 onto 17th Avenue Southeast next to the Canyon Park Park and Ride. The direct access ramp at SR 522 will allow the center express toll lanes to exit down onto 522 directly with added signals there with the conversion of the existing northbound lanes to become the southbound toll lanes and a new bridge being constructed to carry the northbound traffic. The direct access ramp at SR 527 will exit to the north side only onto 17th Avenue there. It will also have a, continue the pedestrian access across the freeway there and will be accommodated for what the crosswalk, it's not shown on there now, but it will be included So, some important planned considerations that we would like council to be aware of. 17th Avenue Southeast and 220th Street Southeast are currently private roadways in the Canyon Park Business Park. WashDOT will be acquiring the right-of-way needed to make those improvements along there to widen that road a little bit in some areas, just to accommodate the new traffic that's going to be using that. All their improvements on 17th will be required to meet city design and construction standards or an approved equivalent. And a very important, significant fact is that city must, City Council must accept and ultimately accept this roadway and the improvements as a city street. So, you'll be, that'll come back to you guys later. At this time, the process to date, all the projects that are being planned right now are only currently funded for design, and there's no construction funds being, have been identified yet. The schedule is for the construction to begin in 2021 and be complete by 2024 to coincide with the- with the 405 and 522 BRT service, transit service. City staff just recently did a review of the 15% design plans, and we have provided them review comments for that. And those are mainly for the private roadways that we're going to be taking over. And finally, the most important thing that you need to know tonight is that the Wash dot will be having an open house here in City Hall on March 18th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And we hope that you can attend that. And that's all. Have any questions for me?
Councilmember, Councilmember Zornz.
Just a quick favor. Would you possibly be able to send us that PowerPoint so we can study those versus me saying, could you back that up and let me study that for about five minutes while everybody?
Sure.
Would that be possible?
Oh, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? They're speechless, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Guys, have a nice evening.
You, too. Onto the city manager council committee reports. Nope. Anybody? Okay. Yeah. Councilmember Olson, let's get stuck on your first name.
So just giving a update on the Seashore Forum from last week. We had a couple presenters there. One from the PSRC giving an update on the Vision 2050. It's continuing to move forward. They've just issued their draft environmental issue statement. It's out for a 60-day review period. We also had a present, presentation from a rep from the Port of Seattle for Sea-Tac Airport. Little fact, it's the busiest airport nationally, so it's, and continuing, continuing to grow. They're working on their sustainable airport master plan. They're looking at how to continue to plan and accommodate the additional growth that they're experiencing. Then my other committee that I have here is the Snohomish County Steering Committee. We had a presentation from the Alliance for Affordability from Chris Collier. He's basically the arch that we all know and love. It's the arch in the north for Snohomish County, where arch is for King County. So he gave an update on what they were all doing in 2018, and they funded three housing affordability projects with some of their monies that they've managed to collect. And I'm working with the city manager to have him come and present to our city council in the near future, which he was very eager to do. So, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Councilmember Olson was being humble, so I just wanted to mention that he will be the new co-chair of the Snohomish County tomorrow Steering Committee. And he's also become the Chair of the Administration Committee for the Board of Health. So thank you for representing Bothell and stepping up.
All right, seeing no other committee reports, we'll move into visitor comment. Each person addressing the council will give his or her name in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless the council grants further time, shall limit the address to three minutes. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion either directly or through the mayor or through a member of the council without permission of the mayor. And the first is Susan Gardner.
This is typically my festival wear, but tonight's kind of serious. So I gave, I have handouts for you, so I have a map, and then my comments that I'll read as fast as I can. I'm co-producer of the Tree Lighting Festival in Bothell. It's a community event that attracted over 3,000 people this last year in 2018. This was our fourth year. And for, we do two hours of activities and treats on the first Sunday in December. It is perceived as being a city-driven event, although it is planned and executed by a dedicated group of merchants and citizens of Bothell. We'd love nothing more than to have the city support this endeavor. I've provided a map that was prepared about a month ago, when we realized that we needed a little bit more room to do our activities, and the reasons being that we're becoming very popular. We have more participants than we're able to stage on one block of Main Street. And we'd like to have additional music, but we have, can't have too much competing bands. So Bothell High School didn't participate this time because we had others. We'd like to move food trucks into a food court so that the lines can be contained to one area, as well as the noise. I know on page two of your agenda item tonight that there was, there was a strained permit process due to the decentralized nature of communication with event organizers, challenges of coordination by email, et cetera. This definitely applied to our festival permit, although I offered to meet face-to-face almost from the beginning. Our festival has one point of contact, me, and it took contact by others, though, to try and get some answers, things that we were uncertain about after Main Street was City has some requirements. Why can't the majority, I want to know why these can't be provided by the organizers? We have over 70 volunteers, student, high school student volunteers. We'd love to use them. We keep the street cleaner than when we found it, and a whole lot of other things that I don't have time to go into because there's a blinking green light. Overall, okay, so a Main Street enclosure is essential to our festival because that's where the tree is located. What I found in the brief time that I had since late this morning, when I found out about this agenda item, to put together, there are inconsistencies, omissions, and contradictions. My co-producer Nancy Pippenich was told that we would be included in the process of developing these rules and regulations, but we weren't contacted. We feel that you should include organizers when you're developing these types of things. I'd like to make a few quotes here. One is from your agenda, "Build a sense of community and improve quality of life for residents and visitors." Port Townsend had a placard that I read this week, this holiday season, and I inserted Main Street. "Main Street continues to be the place where we come together to chart our town's future and to remind us of its past." As a co-producer of the Tree Lighting Festival and the second-largest community event in Bothell behind the parade, I request that this, the item AB-19-041 be tabled and that our organizers be included in the process going forward to identify areas that can be shared, or the burdens decrease for those of us volunteers that are trying to put on an event. Thank you.
Thanks. Next is Mike Rue.
I'm Mike Rue with, I'm representing the Bothell Kenmore Chamber of Commerce as its past president. The Bothell community loves to connect. The crowd for the Fourth of July parade is enormous, and the Main Street holiday tree lighting attracts 3,000 and is growing. Bothell Underground Beer Festival gathers 1,500 people, and it's growing. And the Bothell Block Party and Brew Fest, over 3,000. Our community benefits greatly from these events. Community events improve the quality of life for our residents and add to the walkability of our town. They contribute to our economic vitality by connecting our community with our businesses and helps to fill our hotel rooms and restaurants with tourists. Events provide the opportunity to celebrate community, music, art, microbreweries, wineries, and much more. It is also a valuable, a valuable public relations tool for the city of Bothell, an opportunity to connect council and staff and showcase our city resources. That said, events like these are extremely difficult to produce. They require significant staff time and are remarkably expensive. The organizations that produce many of the Bothell events are volunteer and nonprofit organizations, which are greatly affected by financial barriers. If the city is considering not having these types of events on Main Street, and alcohol is continued to be prohibited, prohibited in the parks, and fees to host events outside continue to increase, it's possible that the chamber and other community organizations may not be able to continue to host such events. Are you prepared to determine that the community cannot produce a holiday tree lighting festival or any other future events not yet conceived to bring vitality to Main Street? Although the garage for Beer Festival was not traditional, the community loves the unique atmosphere, and our staff works diligently with Public Works to establish rules for vendors, cleanup, and ultimately paid nearly $3,800 to Public Works for their staff time for this event last year. As you consider making changes to the special events permit process and fees and approved locations, our chamber wants to encourage council to challenge yourself to find creative solutions to encourage rather than discourage community events, and that make our community stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is David Habelitz.
Hi, I'm David Habelitz. I wanted to first compliment Emmett Heath and Community Transit on a fantastic job that they are doing. The double-tall buses are awesome. The onboard bike racks are great, and the adding the characteristics of true bus rapid transit is an incredible feature that I would love to see on Sound Transit. On the other side of that coin, Sound Transit is now in the process in their 522 route of eliminating my bus stop, which is that 132nd Avenue, right on the edge of Woodinville. This is going to mean that I'm going to be forced to get in my car and drive to a park and ride to catch the bus to get downtown, which is totally counter to the whole purpose of this. And for my contribution and tax money, I would think that I would want an improvement in service, not a decrease in service. Second point I wanted to make is that in the Senate right now, there is SB 5825, which in that bill has one of the things is to eliminate the speed requirement of the toll lanes. So those buses I just talked about will not benefit if we're going to take away the whole point of having the toll lanes. They're taking away that requirement that they have to go at least 45 miles per hour 90% of the time. Third, the interchange that you just saw on 405, I don't know if you noticed, but they're adding three traffic lights to State Route 522. I ask that you push to get those lights eliminated from this plan. I want to say finally, I personally am very willing to pay my share of gas tax to pay for roads in Clayellum and Yakima, because we're all in this together as a state, one Washington. So why are we penalizing one group of people with toll lanes? I'm asking you, as our leadership, to please stand up to all of these agencies and give us our due without penalizing us. Please. Again, thank you, Community Transit, for a fantastic job.
Does anybody else want to provide public comment? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, so I understand, which one is it? AB-19-032 was pulled from consent. Is there a motion to approve the remainder?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Deputy Mayor, second by Councilmember Agnew. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, place your vote. All right.
We have no electronic voting. It has to be hand vote tonight.
We love the speakers feedback thing up here, too. It's awesome.
We have a lot of problems tonight.
All right. And this, we'd already did discussion on the motion. All right, raise your hands, say a aye if you approve the extended agenda. Aye, all right. Passed unanimously with the AB-19-032, suspend rules of recording for the March 12th, 2019 council, city council meeting. I don't know who pulled it, I wasn't here. Councilmember Zornz.
I just wanted, the reason why I pulled this is, not that I disagree with it, but I want to make sure that all of council is on the same page with this. I know there's been some concern that we, that there are instances where we do not record, and it's in an environment where we're not making a policy, we're not spending money. It's personal matters, either in an interview that's going on or in team building. In this case, it's for team building. And I just wanted to make sure that all of, all of council is on board that we suspend recording on this. And if we're not, I'm concerned that team building will be a counterproductive exercise and a waste of our evening. So that's why I pulled it. I just wanted to make sure that when we go in and have our team building exercise, that we're there to build trust and we're not worried about what's being recorded.
All right. Is there any other discussion or motion? Deputy Mayor? Oh, sorry. Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. And I actually want to thank Councilmember Zornz for pulling this. I think it's important that we have open and transparent government. And sometimes we have meetings that, again, if we're doing, you know, trying to come together as a team, team building experiences, some of those things shouldn't be recorded. But it is important that we ensure that, you know, the public know what we're doing. So by you discussing what this not recording is about, they understand that we're going to be doing team building amongst the council. So I feel that that, that's a good, that you brought that up. So thank you so much.
Deputy Mayor.
I just wanted to thank you for pulling it. I, the last time we did team building, you know, we share personal things about ourselves, and I'm, I'm not really excited about having that recorded for everyone to see, so I appreciate that.
It is still open to the public, though. They can come in there, yep. Okay, is there a motion? Moved by Councilmember McCullough. Second, there we go. Second by Deputy Mayor. Any discussion on the motion? All the favors, say aye. Aye. Passed unanimously. All right. Public hearing, AB-19-035, public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution approving an amendment to the adopted 2018-2025 capital facilities plan. And we have Zundell, is that correct? No, that's not Zundell. Is this, do I need to open up, this is a public hearing, so officially open the hearing?
So, good evening, Mayor, Deputy and City Council. The next three agenda items, two of which are public hearings, are interrelated. So what we are asking with your permission tonight, if staff could provide one presentation which encompasses all three items, and if that's acceptable, we'll begin, okay?
Well, let's just do something real quick, just in case, because Paul's not there. What's the other? One second. Open two public hearings at the same time, unless council's not okay with that, which I'm sure you guys are. We'll open AB-19-036, public hearing to consider approval of proposed ordinance amending the city's 2019-2020 biennial budget, and open the public hearing for AB-19-037, adoption of proposed inter-fund loan ordinance. There we go. Now we're gone.
So we'll do one presentation for all three, and I think that'll help explain how they are all-encompassing.
Okay.
So for the first public hearing portion, I'll turn it over to our senior financial analyst, Gretchen Zundell.
Good evening. Tonight, I will present the amendment to the adopted 2019-2025 capital facilities plan to include the replacement of the downtown fire station 42 and Canyon Park Fire Station In early 2018, council approved including a capital bond measure In early 2018, council approved including a capital bond measure to fund the rebuild of fire stations 42 and 45. Both fire stations are currently outdated. Canyon Park Fire Station 45 was built in 1985 and is 33 years old. It will house a new police satellite office for police officers to better serve North Bothell residents. Downtown Fire Station 42 was built in 1980 and is 39 years old. The new facilities will include safety upgrades, technical renovations, and energy infrastructures to accommodate current and future growth. In August, the Capital Facilities Plan Process Committee formalized the recommended 2019-2025 Capital Facilities Plan for council's consideration. The CFP categorized the replacement of fire stations as unsecured until voters approved the public safety capital bond. On November 13th, council adopted the 2019-2025 Capital Facilities Plan with the replacement of fire stations remaining in the unsecured funding category of future needs and request. On November 8th, voters approved the public safety capital bond to fund construction of fire stations 42 and 45. The total estimated cost is $35,500,000. The replacement of fire stations 42 and 45 project is anticipated to begin design in 2019 with construction on the Canyon Park Fire Station 45 slated to begin by spring The goals are construction of Canyon Park Fire Station 45 to begin in spring 2020 and completion by early 2021. And construction of downtown fire station 42 to begin in early 2021 and completion by early 2023. This concludes my portion of the presentation. Staff's recommendation, recommended action for this item is to adopt the proposed resolution approving amendment to the adopted 2019-2025 Capital Facilities Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Was that it for all three?
Nope, that was the first one.
Okay, just checking.
So the next one with the budget amendment for 2019, this public hearing, CFP projects are incorporated into the city's biennial budget, which brings us to this next item, amending the 2019-2020 budget. In accordance with governmental accounting standards, the city budgets at the fund level, two new restricted funds have been created to account for the public safety levy, increasing police and fire services, and the public safety construction of rebuilding fire stations 42 and 45. Public safety levy revenues will not be available until May, and bond proceeds for the fire stations will not be secured until later this fall. In order to move forward with preliminary planning, it is necessary to have council-approved appropriations in each fund. Staff is proposing inter-fund loans, $1 million from the water, from each fund of the water and sewer utility funds, to go towards the public safety levy fund and the capital construction fund to provide council-approved funding for the implementation until levy revenues are received. Staff's recommended action for this item is to adopt the proposed ordinance amending the city's 2019-2020 biennial budget to include the inter-fund loan. Now for the last item, which is the inter-fund loan and not a public hearing. The third agenda item is for council's consideration to adopt an inter-fund loan ordinance. As stated in the previous slides, an interim loan would provide short-term financing until property tax levy and bond proceeds are received. Finance staff, together with public work staff, determined that using unrestricted reserves from the water and sewer funds were the best option to provide interim financing. Here's a brief timeline which shows the receipt of levy revenues in May. Fire designs in the spring of 2019, and in the fall of 19, public safety bonds are issued. With the end of the year, we are anticipated to have the loans totally repaid by the end of this year. The inter-fund loan will be used to hire levy positions, procure a project management firm, and fund initial administrative costs for the implementation of the levy and the bond until revenues are received. The loans will bear interest rate at the Washington State Local Government Investment Pool with full repayment anticipated by the end of 2019. Staff will be presenting a project plan for implementation of the levy and bond in the near future. Staff's recommended action for this item is to adopt the proposed inter-fund loan So to summarize, the Capital Facilities Plan Amendment will reflect secured funding for the replacement of fire stations 42 and 45. The budget amendment will provide legally adopted appropriations for the public safety levy fund and public safety capital construction fund. The inter-fund loan will provide interim financing until the new levy and bond proceeds are received. And that concludes our presentation, and I'll now turn it back over to Mayor and Council for public hearing and comments. Thank you.
Okay, so I have two sheets that nobody signed up for, public comment, but does anybody want to provide public comment on either items? Ordinance amending the city's 2019 biennial budget and the resolution approving an amendment to the adopted 2019-2025 Capital Facilities Plan. Nobody? All right. Council? Councilman Agnew, would you like to go first? No? There you go.
Are we asking for questions or comments? I think it makes a lot of sense. I support this wholeheartedly.
Anybody else? Deputy Mayor?
When would be an appropriate time to ask about the design? Are we going to be getting a presentation at some point about? I just had questions about how long we're designing these buildings to last for, whether or not we're doing anything in terms of a LEED-type process or, you know, more sustainable buildings, that sort of thing. Do we know those answers yet?
The council has a policy for building LEED-certified, I believe it's silver. So we're required to build them LEED-certified by silver standard, and we haven't figured all that out. That's one of, we'll be bringing an initial presentation on April 2nd to start to talk to you about our implementation plan, and then a project plan will probably come in June.
Okay, super, thanks. Can you remind me the length of the bond?
Oh, I didn't look at that today.
I couldn't remember if it was 20 or 25 years.
20?
20.
20.
Okay. And then I just wanted to point out, there was a Seattle Times article that talked about how Bothell had the highest tax increase, and I just want to remind everybody, this is why you voted for it. And the other question that I had was, so I understand taking an inter-fund loan to have money available for hiring architects and the design, but I'm curious about using it for the levy because if we don't have the money yet, but we're hiring people, is it just because of the LEED time and training that we're doing that? I guess I'm a little confused about whether we should be doing that for levy positions.
Well, we wanted to get going, so there's been an eagerness to start to move forward and deliver the services that the community has, is expecting. And so if we don't start the hiring process, we don't work on the administration, we don't get things in place, we're not going to be hiring officers until late 2019. And so we felt to be able to deliver for the community, it was best to start to get going, and that way, there's money to cover. The levy is for a one-year period, $4.8 million. It's coming in, we're allowed to spend it, we just haven't collected it yet. And so we felt we made the decision that we want to get moving.
Does that mean, though, that those positions are only covered for 11, or, how long is the levy for? 12 years? Does that mean it's only covered really for 11? I'm just trying to figure out how that gets paid for, if we're paying in advance of receiving the money. Does that mean at the other end, where those positions aren't covered for that same period of time?
It's $4.8 million for 12 months, and so it's the same amount of time, so we're not, or basically it's, we just don't get the money until May because that's how it's collected, but it's for the year of 2019.
So it's just that delay until May? It's not a full year?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I was, thank you for making my question more, more understandable.
Happy to.
I'm really excited. I, I totally support all, all three. And thank you for your hard work.
Councilmember McCollough.
Thank you, and I really appreciate kind of moving forward as quickly as we can, and this is a way to do that. But I do want to clarify one thing, and I'm, sorry Deputy Mayor, but I have to clarify this. We've, I've received a lot of questions about the increase in property taxes at Bothell, and you mentioned this was one of the reasons, but it isn't the only reason. It's also the North Shore School District levies and bonds, and it's also the increase in property values. So we're all in this together, and it's a problem for many of our constituents. I've heard from people over and over again, and I've asked our city manager to kind of respond to this, so we all understand why our increase in property taxes is where it is.
Councilmember Zornz.
Just a brief comment. Anytime we talk about spending money here in this city, we're talking about spending our money. And I approached the bond and the levy very soberly, and I, and the city embraced the bond and the levy. Because we have, what is it, 4.8 million that are coming in?
4.2.
4.2, thank you. Little difference, right? Because we have 4.2 million coming in, it's prudent to me to move forward with this loan so that we don't have any, so we can minimize the surprises. I think the public wants us to get the job done, get it done well, within a good timeframe, and not surprise them with, we need to tap into more money to get the job done. So I can fully support this, what are we calling this? An inter-loan fund? Fully support it because time is of the essence.
There you go.
All right. Likewise, I'm in support of this. I think with just any large projects, the sooner that you can get them started, the sooner that you can lock in the prices, and the longer you wait, the more expensive things cost, so. So I think definitely the sooner we can start, the sooner we can start realizing the benefits of all this that we're investing in for the city and the services and the people. So it takes a while to find good people, and so sooner we start, the sooner it pays off.
Well, I just want to pile on and just say I really appreciate the community approving the safe, public safety levies. The fire stations are really in bad shape, and I think it's really important that we did what we've done as a community to support those that protect us. And there are some things about those fire stations that weren't safe for them, and I think it's, it's, it's time, and I'm glad that we're doing this. So with that, sorry about the, I don't know if you guys are hearing the reverb, but it's like, it's bad up here with the, with speakers feeding back to us. Is there a motion? So we have kind of opened all three. If we can take all, can we take all three even though? No, just the public hearings together? Just one at a time?
I would do one at a time.
Okay.
Clarity.
Is there a motion?
I move that we do the recommended action and adopt a proposed resolution approving the amendment to the 2019-2025 Capital Facilities Plan.
Second.
All right, it's moved by Councilman Agnew, second by the Deputy Mayor, to approve a resolution amending the adopted 2019-2025, can't say that, Capital Facilities Plan. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Passed unanimously. All right, is there a motion for the next one?
I recommend we adopt the proposed ordinance amending the city's 2019-2020 biennial budget.
Second.
It's moved by the Deputy Mayor, second by Councilman Agnew, to approve the ordinance amending the city's 2019-2020 biennial budget. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Passed unanimously. All right, last one.
I recommend that we adopt the proposed inter-fund loan ordinance.
Second.
It's moved, it's moved by Councilman Agnew, second by the Deputy Mayor, to adopt the inter-fund loan ordinance. Is there any discussion on the motion? I just wanted to say I checked to see if we borrow money from ourselves, we pay interest, and we actually do. I thought that was kind of interesting, but at the going rate, too, it's not even a discount. All right, any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Councilmember Zornz, was that an aye? Okay, good. Passed unanimously. All right, we are on to, we should do that more often, just take on three things at a time, speeds things up. AB-19-038, appointment to Parks and Recreation Board. City Clerk.
Thank you. Yeah, I've got some reverberation up here as well. As you know, on February 5th, council filled positions on various board and commissions. However, on February 14th, we did receive a resignation for position number seven on the Parks and Recreation Board. So we have reached out to the four applicants who were not appointed on February 5th that applied for Parks and Recreation to see if they were still interested. All four indicated they were. So tonight, we get to do this again, but only for one. You have in your folders at the, at the dais there, you have voting sheets, and if you could please cast your vote, put your name at the top, cast your vote for one of the four candidates, and pass them down to me. We'll, I'll tally the votes, and we will appoint for the unexpired term for position number seven. Thank you.
Did anybody want to make a plug for one of the four? Councilman Agnew?
I think all four candidates are outstanding candidates. I've known Jack Lindroth his entire life. He's a local boy that, grown up here, goes to church here. He'd be an excellent candidate.
Did everybody, the hand that's in? Oh, wait, you gotta vote. Councilman, okay, good. Force you to vote up here. Is it okay if we just wait here?
I can tally it pretty quickly. I will say that there is a majority of council that's needed for a vote, so at least four votes. So we will. And we have four votes for Jack Lindroth, so he will be our new appointee to position number seven on the Parks and Recreation Board. Thank you.
Do we have to make a motion?
Yeah, I don't, sorry. Thank you. I need a motion to ratify that.
There we go.
Thank you.
Motion to appoint Jack Lindroth to the remaining open seat on the Parks Board.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor, that was a good one. Councilman Agnew, to appoint Jack Lindroth to the Parks Board, Parks and Recreation Board, sorry.
Can I speak to my motion?
Sure.
I just wanted to say the other thing that I really like about Jack is he, he lives in downtown Bothell, but he works in Stonemish County, Bothell, so he'll have a great perspective on, on all areas of Bothell.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Passed unanimously. Moving right along, we are into new business, AB-19-039, Business Retention Expansion Plan, and we have Jeannie. Ah, I'm sorry, Ms. Ash.
I need adult supervision here? Oh, maybe not. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. I might have it muted, so, yeah, I have it muted, so just wondering if you're ready. I can talk without the slides. Good at that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Good evening. I am here to tell you about our new Business Retention and Expansion Program, and tell you what it is, why we're doing it, what we're going to do, and then I'm going to ask you for your support. So a Business Retention and Expansion Program, bottom line is about proactively engaging with your business community. It is the bread and butter of economic development programs, and it's a super important program. And it's important because our existing businesses are in the best position to quickly create jobs and contribute to our tax base. And in addition to that, we're living in a rapidly changing economy. Our population is growing, our technology, technology is rapidly, rapidly changing, and our businesses are being bought and sold and traded. And on top of that, our, our city is planning for space for new businesses. So it would be risky for us not to engage with our local businesses. So our goals for a Business Retention and Expansion Program are to strengthen the connection between companies and the community, remove their barriers to growth, and identify companies that are at risk of either downsizing or completely shutting down. You know, it's kind of a, a warning system so that we can engage with them before they get to that point, and hopefully support their efforts to save employees and not shut down. So this is about creating a public and private partnership with our business community because we, as a city, are only as strong as our businesses are strong. So there are a variety of Business Retention and Expansion Programs, and they're unique to each city. And one example that we have already is our biomedical device manufacturing innovation partnerships zone. So that is a form of Business Retention and Expansion. But what I'm proposing is that we do a high touch, go out and meet with our executives in our community, and spend time with them, and interview them, and survey them. And we're doing this because when you have that connection, that FaceTime with a business, you get to dive deeper into their, into the business, understand what makes them thrive, and what their challenges and opportunities are. It's also to, a way to, you know, create that long-term relationship. So this process is going to be, we'll set, set appointments with businesses, and then we'll go out and meet with them, and we're going to talk to them and survey them. And the survey will be a two-part survey. One part will be about the, the community services. How satisfied are they with community services? Everything from street maintenance, to our hospitals, to our schools, and to our healthcare facilities. It's kind of a, it's a short survey, but it's a comprehensive survey. And the second part of the survey will be about how satisfied are you doing about doing business in Bothell and your business location? Is your neighborhood clean? Do you have good neighbors? You know, do you have easy access to all of your supply chain? Questions like that. And then on top of that, you know, part of the conversation will be asking leading questions like, how can we increase your quality of life for your executives and your employees? What are some creative ways we can make you eager to stay here and expand here? And are you able to find employees with skills, education, and attitudes that you need? So part of this process, part of this conversation is also a lot of listening, and, and listening for what I call their pain, you know, what is your pain? One of my favorite questions I like to ask when I meet with businesses, what's keeping you up at night? This also gives us an opportunity to advocate for them and connect them to business resources. And we are very, very fortunate in our region to have an abundance of resources that are available to businesses of all sizes. This list here is just a small example of what we have and available to us in the community at the regional level, the state, and the local, regional, and state level. Everybody knows the Small Business Development Center. It provides services from startup to succession planning and everything in between. The Procurement Technical Assistance Center provides companies information and how to get grant contract, government contracts. And then the Choose Washington Export Voucher Program is actually a grant program that helps businesses that want to expand their market globally. They will help you travel overseas to trade shows to get new customers. But one of the most exciting, I think, programs we have right here in our own backyard is the Cascadia Corporate and Continuing Education Center. I'm going to ask Kristin to come up and introduce herself and talk about her program.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Kristin McConaughey. I'm the Executive Director of the Corporate and Continuing Education Center. And a couple of things that we do, we just wanted to take a few moments of your time to talk a little bit about a resource that we already have. We've been doing this work here for about five years in conjunction with Cascadia College and two other colleges as well. We provide corporate and company training to organizations of all different sizes, as well as individuals in the community, right here at Cascadia College, and then also up and down the 405 corridor. A big part of what we do is a lot of listening, as Jeannie was talking about, but we are able to provide three main things, and that's quality. We spend a lot of time finding the right instructors at the right time to be able to help businesses get on with what they do as a specialty, so they're not having to spend a lot of time developing training. We can do that for them. And we bring that onsite to companies or have them come onsite at the college. We provide professional continuing education, as well as small business acceleration programs, and coaching, networking, and training around small business, and of course, personal interest. Some of the things that we do are also around responsiveness, and so when a company or organization asks for something, we generally get one shot. So we're very careful about what we do and how we do it, but we're responsive to it in that we reply fast. Sometimes they might need graduates, they might need new hires to be able to do the next thing with their company. If it's not training, our specialty is sort of a one shop stop where we get them to the right home. If it's not training and education, maybe it's hiring graduates, maybe it's donating to a college, maybe it's other ways to engage a company, to stay in this community and not have to leave to go find it, to get those connections, and weave it all together for them. So we're part of that puzzle piece. Some of the things we do are as, we could be flagging training all the way up to project management. This is just a sample set of some of the certificate programs that we offer. And companies may want one small piece of that, they may want all of a whole certificate, they may want multiple, depending on the service line, and we're able to provide that. And some of the things that we get asked are, can you do XYZ training? Which could be just about anything. We may not have it today, but if we don't, we'll either develop it or find a way to get it done for them. So it's, again, that responsiveness and listening and crafting a way for them to get what they need in a way that's seamless for them. These are the three colleges that have come together. Dr. Murray here at Cascadia College has partnered with two other presidents to provide this service, and so these are the locations we're at, but we're all over the place. And we do training up in Alaska and Florida, all, all over. It's sort of catching wind, and we have some articles that come out talking about what we're doing. It's a little bit breaking the mold in terms of traditional continuing ed, in that it's steered towards serving a business need and helping engagement for employers to stay right where they need to be, whether they have a home base here and other satellite locations, other places. We can get the training to them wherever their satellites are as well. So this is a 425 Business article back in 2016, one I really kind of like, that talks about the partnership, and so you can have this slide if you want a little bit more information on the backend of that. So with that, turn it back to Jeannie. Thank you.
So the, this BRE plan that I would like to implement is a six-month program with the goal of meeting 50 businesses within the next six months, and based on our sectors and the number of employees in our sectors, we'll be meeting with 15 life science companies, 10 manufacturers, and 15 retail and professional services companies, as well as our 10 largest employers. And I'm going to do some separate meetings with our institutions of higher education. So after we finish the six-month program, and we do all of the surveys, we're going to compile the data, quantify it, and come back to you, come back to the city council with recommendations for potential policies and/or programs to support our, our local business community. Also, too, want to say that this is not the only BRE. BRE is ongoing. It should be a program that a city has ongoing at all times. I have already been doing BRE visits informally with some of our local businesses, both on Main Street and out in our Canyon Park. And, you know, one example is, is that I met a Canyon Park business who was super frustrated with our permitting process, so I took our Community Development Director out to meet with their Vice President, and we had, I think, a very productive conversation about best practices, did a lot of listening, and then gave some advice, and I think it was a very productive meeting. And I've also met with a variety of businesses on Main Street, and my favorite quote is, "If you can't make money on Main Street, you shouldn't be in business." So I could not do this, and this has not happened in a vacuum. We need our partners in order to make this successful and have their support. So our partners are the Bothell-Kinmore Chamber of Commerce, Cascadia Ecology, Cascadia, Cascadia College, University of Washington, Bothell, and the Economic Alliance of Snohomish County. All four of these organizations have reviewed this plan and provided me with feedback. The Seattle Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce is also an important partner in doing this. They have their own BRE program, but we have a lot of synergies in what's happening at South Lake Union with their research and our manufacturing in Canyon Park. So that's an important relationship. And then one other partner that we have is the Governor's Office of, no, excuse me, Governor's Office for Regulatory Innovation and Assistance. I'm going to let Scott Hitchcock, Hitchcock come up and talk to you about their program, but I just want to say, it's a one-stop shopping for business, and I'm very excited for it.
My name is Scott Hitchcock. I'm with the Governor's Office for Regulatory Innovation and Assistance, and I manage our Business Services Center. Our goal with the Governor's Office for Regulatory Innovation Assistance is just regulatory One of my roles is to facilitate the small business liaison team at the State of Washington, which was formalized by Governor Gregoire in 2012, and it's grown to include 26 state agencies, and they all have representatives on this liaison team. Our focus is on outreach, regulatory improvement, new business tools. And our vision is making Washington State the best place to do business, and we are focused on listening to businesses and then driving action to make it easier to do business in Washington State. Some of the results of the, the effort of the group are creating a mobile-friendly website, It's intended to be one place for businesses to go and start in the state of Washington. It's, it's been really a focus on, on Washington State services and regulations at the state level, and has a roadmap on how to get a business started, has a very detailed business guide, also contact information to the liaisons so businesses can contact the agencies directly, as well as live help and chat and text and email and phone services they can call and get assistance at our information center. But now we're, we're looking at expanding that, and I've talked to a number of, of local businesses on the east side of King County, and we're looking at doing a pilot project where we're going to enhance business.wat.gov to include local content filtered by user preferences, so they'd be able to select locations such as Bothell, and then content on the website would be presented and filtered to include local content. Also, we're looking at including notifications that the user can manage if they want to receive information from our partners, such as from the city of Bothell, be able to provide notifications to them if they choose to receive those. And also, we'll be providing a sign-in experience where they'll be able to see a summary of business information that's held by the state on their business, with links on how they can get updates and, and modify the information if they find something that's out of date. So we're really trying to push this expansion to broaden the, the scope of business.wat.gov, take it away from just the state sort of services to include not only local but federal as well. So we're trying to hit all levels of government, the IRS, SCORE, SBA, they're all partners with us as well, the SBDC as well. And so we're going to pilot this in East King County, and we've got Bellevue, Bothell's interested, and we'll be meeting with Kirkland tomorrow. So we have a good interest in it, and we hope that it will help drive, people looking at the business.wat.gov, drive them to your website, looking for information on how to get started in Bothell or other cities in the area as well. So just wanted to thank you for that. That's our, our project. Look forward to partnerships with the east side, King County, and as we pilot this. And feel free to, of course, explore the website at business.wat.gov. Thank you.
Just real quick, keep that dropdown menu in alphabetical order. We like that.
So one of the reasons why I'm so excited about this is that every, every city website has a Doing Business tab on their website, and you go to it and you click on it, and it's usually the SBDC. This will be a website on steroids, and people collect information and gather information in a variety of ways, and this is just one more tool in our toolkit. And I'm very excited that we've been asked to pilot it. And that's the end of this presentation, and I am, will be the one implementing this program, and it is important, as a city employee, that I have your support as I go out in the community and meet with businesses. So that's what I'm here for tonight, is ask you for your support.
I'll lead that one off. I support you, Ms. Ash, and appreciate what you've brought to the city and helping us acquire and retain businesses.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
I'm really excited. I, in, in the past couple of years, you know, I've talked to a couple of businesses that were having to move for whatever reason, and been frustrated when I couldn't help them. I couldn't help them find a new location to lease, and just felt kind of, you know, like, I should have been doing more, could have been doing more. So this is really exciting that we'll have this opportunity. I, I wondered if, this is probably a little off-topic, but not really, have, have there been any efforts in terms of Country Village and helping them, those businesses relocate?
So, just as a, so it is unfortunate that the, that you did not have an Economic Development Manager earlier. But I will say this is that in the last couple of weeks, I actually have, I met with, I've had contact with a couple of different business owners who are interested in finding space. And I will confess that I have helped them, tried to help them find space locally, but also too outside the community, primarily because they need to be out in a month, so they need solutions fast. So I've been reaching out to my partners in our neighboring communities to help some of these businesses.
I appreciate that, and I'm really excited that at least one has made it to downtown, so that's exciting.
That's true.
Yeah, I've, I've been a proponent of an Economic Development Manager for, for a while now, and I'm, I'm really excited that all of council feels that way because I think strong businesses make for a really vibrant community. So thank you for all the work you're doing. You're really laying the groundwork for some important work.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you, and we're really excited to have you. We, I've wanted you for a long time as well, and so I'm really excited that you're here and the work you're doing. I have a couple of things of interest that I kind of want to ask you about. So one of the things that we say in Bothell is we are an innovation zone?
Yes.
How does that play into what you're doing here? I mean, how do we really use that to help businesses kind of say, wow, we want to come to Bothell, it's an innovation zone?
So at, at the, the intent, the original intent of the innovation partnership zones was organic economic development through the collaboration between the higher ed, the public, public sector and the private sector, working together on creating new technology. And what we have done in this community is created this innovation partnership zone, as well as the Mercury Center, which is at, like, the Lake Washington Institute, and that's actually, actually an incubator that has spun out a couple of businesses that I've located in Canyon Park. Because I, I, if I know my history, at the time when they were looking for incubator space, there was none available in Canyon Park, and the space that they have at the Lake Washington Institute is at no cost. There is some fees to use it, there's some user fees, and I do want to remind council that you have invested heavily into this org- that you have invested heavily into this organization. You have -- there was some money that was used to pay for equipment, as well as we donated an old copier machine. I think there was a good written -- good written note on top of that. But in any event, we've -- we have -- historically, we have administered this program. And moving forward, what the IPZ does at this time is that it provides an opportunity, it creates a cluster for businesses, and whenever you have a cluster, they can rely on each other, they can use the same supply chain, therefore bringing down the cost of doing business. Also too, they have a workforce, a strong workforce. And also too, we've got some globally traded companies here that are very, very exciting. So if nothing else, it's the brand, you know? Just one of the things that I would like to emphasize is that we, as a community, have got this really strong tech brand that we should be promoting. Did that answer your question?
It did, and very well, thank you. And then I do also want to make a comment. We have some new businesses that are opening in Bothell on Main Street.
Yes.
And I'm very excited about this business. It's going to be awesome for Main Street. They're going to be decorators, and they're going to bring in really exciting vintage and really exciting opportunities, coffee, a little bit of food. It's going to be really exciting. So I hope you'll make contact with them. Have you already?
I have.
Yep. And also, we have another couple, one that came from Country Village that we located, and also I have another couple people in Country Village that I think I know where to go.
Perfect.
So maybe you and I can work together on that.
Perfect, thank you.
And then I guess the last thing I want to say is, when you're out there, one of the questions that you have on your survey here is, "Do you plan to expand your business within the next three to five years?", and it's either yes or no. And then I guess, following that up, and that's probably, you've already got that on your agenda, what can the city do to help you expand your business? And I think that's probably on your agenda, but just wasn't clear, so I wanted to clarify.
Okay, thank you for that.
Anybody else? Councilmember Jones?
Just a couple of things. One is probably a redundant, obvious question, but of the 50 businesses that you're going to be sampling, you know, your 10 largest?
Yes.
If one of them happens to be a life science, you have 10, you know, life sciences, will that be an additional 10 life sciences?
Yes, well, I won't double dip because it's a total of 50.
Okay, that's what I was thinking that you were aiming for. And then the educator in me?
Yes.
Who, her strength was writing test questions to measure what you -- for the information you want. I was looking at your scope of questions that you were covering here, and I thought, "This is good. This looks really good." So I really appreciate it. And initially, I was thinking, "Should we be asking them if there's something that we're missing or not noticing that you want to let us know about?" And as you were presenting, I thought, "No, she's got this covered. It's good." So my only request is, and I'm sure you're going to do this, is I would love to see the survey questions that you're -- when this is all done, which I'm sure you're going to do.
Yes, we'll bring the results back to you.
Okay, so the only other request is that, could we know who those businesses are? Or do you think, are you going to keep that confidential?
So I am trying to find a loophole where we don't have to -- I probably shouldn't say this publicly. I'm trying to find a way where we can dive really deep and ask really solid, substantial questions of our businesses and not be fearful of someone submitting a public records request.
That's a good point.
So at this point, I'm not going to be asking about a number of employees, and I'm not going to be asking about profits.
So that we could identify who it is?
Yeah, no.
No, I think that's fair.
Yeah. And with each business, whenever I meet with a business, I ask them if I can divulge information. I try to respect the confidentiality.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Just to nod our heads, is everybody okay with Ms. Ash going up to the business community? Yeah, okay, there you go.
I will be signing your name to letters, so.
I was going to say too, if they -- I'm willing, you have my cellphone number, so if they're -- or whatever, they can schedule, I'd be happy to meet with them and stuff too if they are really mad at us.
Okay.
Or really like us, whichever.
So with that, you know, one of the fun, best parts about my job is I get to go out and, you know, look under the hood at companies, and city manager and I are going out to AT&amp;T at the end of this month to visit because, did you know that they have a data center there that manages their whole wireless network for the entire United States, and it's one of the most important data network systems in the United States? And we're going to go tour it, and you are all invited. I know you have day jobs, but if you have time, thank you.
All right, thank you. We're on to AB 19-040, Third Amendment to the Interlocal Agreement with King County and Snohomish County and the cities of Woodville, Kenmore regarding the capital improvements within the North Shore Parks and Recreation Service Area. It's you, right, City Mayor?
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Several months ago, I was asked by the Chair of NPRSA, the North Shore Parks and Recreation Service Area, Councilmember McNeil, to take a look at some of the challenges that NPRSA was facing, and so I've been working with Councilmember McNeil, Councilmember Agnew, and Councilmember Olson is the alternate on this board, to provide support and try to figure out a pathway forward for some of the challenges that are being faced by this special district. So I provided a little bit of history in the AB to give some context of what's happened in the past and where we're moving forward in the future. So NPRSA was created as a taxing district in 1988 to basically build the senior center. In 1989, the cities of -- or the county of King and Snohomish County and the cities of Bothell and Woodenville entered into an ILA to support the issuance of a bond. It was passed by the voters, and in 1992, the senior center was built, the first building. Two more subsequent bonds were passed. The second one was to build the adult daycare center, day center, health center, and then the pedestrian bridge to connect the two. Those bonds were consolidated in 2010, and they're all due to mature in 2021. In 2001, an amendment to the interlocal was done to include Kenmore, who had incorporated, and so now it's the cities of Woodenville, Bothell, Kenmore, and the two counties. At that time, to the best of our ability, we found a percentage distribution of membership, sort of, membership fees that are paid by these five agencies. We're having some records management challenges, and so at this point, I'm not able to find the source of this breakdown, but apparently this is the breakdown that NPRSA has been using to receive the membership fees from the five agencies that comprise NPRSA. The senior center, we have, the NPRSA contracts with the North Shore Senior Center to operate the center. That is that they're...
I'm so sorry, I interrupted you. I just wanted to clarify, we being the city did not have a documentation problem. It was the PSRA.
PS --
NPS, sorry.
NPRSA.
NPRSA. But it was them, right? It was not our, the city's documentation?
Sorry, yes.
Okay, just make sure.
Thank you for the clarification. They, we, they, them, yes. There is challenges with how they've been managing their documents. So NPRSA contracts with the North Shore Senior Center to operate the center. There is no rent that's charged to the North Shore Senior Center for their services of operating these buildings. NPRSA has responsibility to maintain the two buildings and the pedestrian bridge, so all capital expenditures and responsibilities fall under NPRSA. The center is responsible for maintenance and sort of the day-to-day care as being the tenant of the facilities. So it's very clear in the agreement that NPRSA is responsible for improvements and conditions of the three facilities. So this discussion started when the senior center brought to the NPRSA board a list of critical and future capital improvements that need, that are needed at these facilities. Several of them are eminent. A couple have already been taken care of by the center, although they weren't financially obligated to do so. They did so to ensure that the building stayed open and could serve our community. There are some eminent needs. Two of them are fire-related, and one has to do with environmental issues. The senior center has elected to move forward with one, although it is still NPRSA's responsibility, and that's a push bar on one of the exit doors, and the other is a fire control panel for the fire system within the building. And then they have some requirements to improve some bioswales on their property that they're required to do. At this time, it's projected that those projects are about $39,000. Again, these are important to keep the buildings open, to keep them functioning, and so NPRSA is looking for creative ways to support the center and making sure that these improvements can be done. So one of the first requests, or the point of the staff report this evening, is at the NPRSA board, we had two discussions about how to handle this, and the board voted to have the member agencies go back to their controlling boards and request the monies based on this percentage breakdown that we've been paying our membership dues by this percentage breakdown. But again, we don't know if it's by population, we're not sure if it's by membership usage, we're still looking, but that's a percentage breakdown that's been used. And so the agencies are going back to their respective boards to request this money so that we can make these improvements so the center can continue to function and stay open. So that's our request this evening. Bothell's share would be $11,337, and we would contribute that towards these improvements. We are collaborating on this. I am working with the city managers of Woodenville and Kenmore. This is a regional center, and so we've distributed some work among ourselves to try to figure out a path forward. NPRSA is not able to hire any staff, so when they've issued the bonds, there is no operating money. There's a small amount of membership fees that come in. They have a very small reserve of $28,000, but they don't have any staff. They have an administrative person that they contract with to basically provide records management and sort of clerk support services. And so we're approaching this, the three of us are approaching this sort of collaboratively. I've agreed to hire an intern through the Evan School and work with the pro bono attorney to sort of lay out options for the MPS board to consider how we would move forward and not only fund the necessary capital projects that have been identified by the center, but also the future of MPSR -- NPRSA, and what options are available, both from a levy standpoint and a bond standpoint, to continue to support this facility. Woodenville is moving forward with an RFQ to get a facility's assessment so that we have a neutral third-party assessment for all the needs. So the center's done a good job in identifying what they think the improvements are, but we don't know if that's a fully comprehensive, and we think we should know exactly what's happening with all three facilities and know what their responsibilities are. And then Kenmore is moving forward. They are leading a legislative advocacy effort, working with our state legislators to find additional funds. There was a $500,000 request put in with Senator Palumbo. We're working to support that, as well as looking for other possible operating and capital funds that the state could assist us with, with the challenges that we're having at this facility. So a good collaborative effort for this regionally-serving facility. So I wanted you to know that we're moving forward with that, and you're going to hear a lot more about MPSRA, but tonight's request is for the $11,337. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. And Brooke Knight is here as well. She's the executive director of the North Shore Senior Center, and she's agreed to be here in case you have questions about the center and any of the infrastructure improvements that have been identified by her and her staff. So either one of us are here to answer questions.
All right, Deputy Mayor?
You answered most of my questions, but I had a couple more. How old is the building?
They're almost 30 years old. So they'll -- well, the first one is 30 years old, the second one, I think, came shortly thereafter, and then the bridge. So they're somewhere 30 to 20 years old.
So, and right now, they're running with zero money for improvements, but some money for maintenance?
No, there's no money.
There's no money?
So the maintenance is provided, so as a tenant, the center basically does general maintenance, so because they're the users of the building, just like when you're a tenant in an apartment, you take care of the carpet and you take care of things, but the building owner, which is NPRSA, is responsible for any capital improvements, any repairs that need to be done to the building.
And there's no fund or money?
So they, when they bonded for all three buildings, they didn't put, like, when we did our levy, we actually added O and M for the fire stations. When they bonded for the three facilities, they put no additional asset replacement. So there's no asset replacement, there's no monies to do any repairs, there is no income for NPRSA.
And it's because they don't charge rent? I mean, that would be the only logical way for them to have income.
Or larger contributions from the member agencies.
Okay. And you did answer the question for the future. It sounds like the board is working on a plan for future. I just, I'm shocked. 30 years ago, people didn't think there was such a thing as maintenance. It's kind of mind-boggling, anyway. I wanted to address the $11,000. So I serve on the Human Services Committee. We had, last cycle, set aside emergency funds, and I wanted to propose to the rest of the council that rather than taking the money out of our operating reserve fund, that we take, we have $13,000 unallocated in the reserve, Human Services Reserve Fund, and I would propose that we use that money for this purpose. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I'm loath to take any money out of the operating reserves, and so luckily there is some that I think, I've already cleared it with the city manager, that we can do that if we'd like to.
I just want to thank Councilmember McNeil for bringing this to everybody's attention. I think having the senior center closed down would be absolutely horrific thing for the city, especially the city of Bothell because it is in our city. So thanks for bringing this to our attention. The city major did say that, so I have a thing, I don't know if everybody's okay with me signing it, just to sign on to the letter to honorable senators, oh, it's about, it's going to a bunch of them, senators, representatives, to try to get half a million dollars for the senior center. Are we okay with me signing that? Okay, cool. Then I'm okay with Deputy Mayor's recommendation. We do have that money, it's confirmed, it's still available. Okay. And the, because we already give money to, give it, we donate money to the senior center through the Human Services account. Okay. Okay, yeah, I'm Councilmember McNeil.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to the city manager and city staff for all the hard work. It's very difficult to sit in as a first-year chair in a board and try to absorb all the information that's happened since 1988, but it was pretty quickly apparent that something needed to take place. And for the work that you did in bringing the other cities together in collaboration to make this happen. As you said, not having a senior center available or the services that they provide in our area is just not an option that we can afford to have here. So first and foremost, thank you for the work that you did on that. Councilmember Agnew and Councilmember Olson serve on that committee as well. We're very well attended at those meetings, and it shows our level of commitment to the seniors within our community and beyond, because that senior center doesn't just serve seniors here locally in Bothell, but it serves seniors around our community. Some of the services that they provide, food, I can't begin, I mean, I get emotional thinking about what that center does, and if it closed down, how devastating I would be and people should be. But again, stepping up, thank you. There's a lot of work left to be done. As the deputy mayor said, and being in construction for the past 27 years, I couldn't even fathom not having money set aside to take care of my house or a building like that that's going to need the maintenance. So this is not an issue that we can solve overnight. This is kind of putting a Band-Aid on it and making sure that the center stays open, which I think is the most important thing that we can do at this time. So again, thank you, and I look forward to actually making a motion on this one.
You okay with taking out Human Services?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Jones, kind of, they want us to say everybody's first name.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you. All great recommendations, great actions, and let's move this forward.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yeah, I'd like to also thank the city manager and
Yeah, I'd like to also thank the city manager, and I'd like to thank Brooks for all the work you do and have been doing. I agree with Councilmember McNeil that it would be a travesty to lose this, for the seniors, for the vets that go there. You know, it's so important to have in our community, and it's one of the busiest this side of the Mississippi. I mean, it gets a lot of people coming in and out of there. And one of these days, I'm going to go over there for the pickleball. But, thank you again, city manager.
Councilmember McCloskey?
Well, I also want to say that the pancake breakfast is not just the seniors, but so many, hundreds and hundreds of people come, so thank you for always having that kind of as a community asset that our people feel really welcome to participate in. And I just want you to know, Brooke, thank you very much for your service. It's really important to this community.
Councilmember Olson?
Yeah, attending these, the NPRSA meetings the past year, I've really seen a change in the attendance and the energy in the meetings. I think, you know, partly to Councilmember McNeil, just grabbing the bull by the horns here and really getting some momentum going. And I think we need to, you know, strike while the iron's hot and, you know, do what we can here, because, you know, this obviously has kind of just been percolating and been ignored in the past, but I think this is the time to do it, and I think this is a great step forward, and just getting these small emergent problems taken care of, and then really go for the big dollars and figure out the long-term plan. So thanks, Brooke, doing a great job over there, and thank you, Councilmember McNeil, doing a great job leading it.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to, yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to move the recommended action, authorize the city manager to execute the Third Amendment to the amended interlocal agreement with the North Shore Parks and Recreation Service Area to fund necessary capital improvements at the North Shore Senior Center in the amount of $11,337.
Second.
Can I do an amending motion?
Move.
And I would like, and I would like those, the funds to be taken from the Human Services.
I rescind my second. Now?
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Is that your main motion you're talking about? Okay. To authorize the city manager to execute the Third Amendment to the amended interlocal agreement with the North Shore Parks and Recreation Service Area to fund necessary capital improvements at the North Shore Senior Center in the amount of $11,337 from the Human Services Fund. Is there any discussion on the motion? Deputy Mayor?
I wanted to thank my fellow councilmembers who've been working on this, because if anything happened to the senior center, my mother would kill me. And if you want a pickleball partner, she loves pickleball. So, and city manager as well, thank you so much for your work. And actually, it's the second largest in the country, so it would be the largest west of the Mississippi. So, thank you, Brooke, as well.
Councilmember Olson?
I just wanted to say one more thing. I forgot to thank the city manager coming to these meetings and really, you know, providing some extra leadership and guidance for the board there. So I think it's really been helpful and given us that extra push that we needed. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Speak to the motion? No, we're good. I can't ask you a question, so I'll just say it. That was not on the city manager's work plan. That was other duties as assigned, which I'm sure that was not a small duty. All right. Anybody know further discussion, raise your hand, say aye, if you approve. All right, passage unanimously. Are we ready for a break? Or do you want to slog through this one?
No, I wouldn't.
Let's have a break. We'll be, the city council will be on break, and we'll be back at 8:15, okay? 8:15.
...special event permit process and we have Ms. Brazitas.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the City Council. Tonight, we're going to talk about the city's proposed new special event permit process. Before we get started, though, I do want to agree Bothell loves to gather. What I will say about what we're going to discuss tonight is that we're, I wanted to clarify ahead of time that we are speaking about a very specific piece of the city's role as it relates to events in this community. So, special events, we'll talk a little bit about the definition of those that we use, but these are externally organized events that take place or have impacts on city property. So, the discussion we're going to have tonight and the permit process you see and the improvements that we've made are in relation to the city's role as both a property owner and also the city's role as the protector of public safety and sanitation. So, the city has other roles that won't be addressed tonight. So, we are also a producer of a lot of events. So, as you know, our kids concerts, our summer concerts in the park, our Freedom Festival is produced by the city. That's an event that we organize and run. Safe Halloween is a city event. Sustain-a-Mania is a city event. In addition to a lot of other smaller events throughout the year, Arbor Day and so forth. So, you'll see other ways that the city relates to events in the community as a producer or as a supporter, or even just the ways that employees believe in the value of community gathering here in Bothell. However, what we're going to be talking about tonight is the city's role as a property owner and the city's role as the protector of public safety and sanitation as it relates to large gatherings of people on or adjacent to city property. So, that's what we're going to be talking about this evening. What is a special event? So, this is a lot of code language, but generally, the old definition is more than 75 people. We're asking for 100, so it'll be almost the same. A lot of this text basically means it's things that are either impacting city services or impacting city property, requiring complex coordination. So, it's really our response to other events. Things that are not special events are city-produced events. So, when it is something that is organized by the Parks and Recreation Department, that's not a special event. We still run through, we still vet our events through the same process, but we don't pay the fee and it doesn't go through exactly the same process as external events because we have our own folks doing the safety and sanitation and we are controlling the services that are provided there. So, a city-produced event is not considered a special event, although it does run in parallel to our process. Events that are indoors, with the exception of the Beer Festival in the garage, if you consider that indoors, indoor events are not generally special events. So, you could gather 500 people indoors somewhere and that's not something that the city has an opinion on. A private or ticketed event are not special events, even if they're held on public property, that's a separate process. Any events held on private property, so if you're not impacting city services, the only exception with private property is if you have a lot of parking that spills out into the neighborhood, we may begin to be involved. But generally, if you have an event on private property, not a special event. And then the last one that our city attorney could speak to in more detail if you're interested, but expressive events are specifically exempt from this process. And this is any sort of freedom of speech events. If you're, if you're doing an event or gathering people to speak about opinions or political speech, anything in that realm will not go through this process and will go immediately to our legal department. So, those are also not included. If you organize a march or a rally or anything like that, it doesn't go through this process. So, these are all things that are not special events. What that leaves us with, then, is external events that are generally organized outdoors, usually on city property. A couple of trends in these in recent years. So, we've seen a really steep increase in the growth of special events. And I will say that this particular data set is of special event permit applications. It's meant, intended to show staff workload in this area, which is one of the reasons that we're having this conversation and we're revisiting the process. For the sake of data integrity, I will tell you, staff internal events that went through the same vetting process are included in these numbers. So, there, there is a section of it that is city events that went through the same vetting process because those have grown in parallel with community events. So, I believe there were about seven last year that were city events that went through. A lot of our large events are city events. So, generally, though, these are external events. So, this is intended to show staff workload, but there is growth in both internal and external events in small and large categories. What types of events have increased? So, this is a way of splitting them out by our new definitions. So, a small event is less than 200 people or a race of any kind. A large event is more than 200 people overnight or a parade of any kind. That's our first cut at the definition. So, that's the one we're working with right now. You'll see that we have a plan to come back to you about a year from now with an update on this process. So, this is our first attempt at making a foundation for this process. In light of this, these increases that you see here, Bothell has become more popular for events. There's increasing demands on the city to produce its own events. We've had the community ask to, for more special event permits where they want to have events. These are all good things, but it's challenging for us. So, so, small events, large events, and race events are the three types that have been growing. And again, those are with our current definitions that we're using here. The reason for that is that small events are often processed more quickly. Large events is where we find some of our current challenges. Along with the growth in events, we have seen challenges with increasing complexity of events and then also some challenges with event organizers who are not as experienced with what is necessary to, to properly cover the safety and sanitation for these events. So, all these came together and brought several departments together to update this process. Again, this is the foundation for a special events program. I will tell you that as council gave direction last fall in the budget process to create a volunteer and special events coordinator position, the Parks Department has been hard at work screening a gigantic pool of very qualified applicants. And this person should be starting, I believe, in April. So, what we're talking about tonight as we address the city as a property owner and the city's role in public safety and sanitation protection, it is a foundation for this new person to come on and take the next crack at continuous process improvements in this. But this is a way of addressing the growth in requests, the complexity of events, and finding ways of making our requirements much more clear and upfront for event organizers so that we reduce the confusion and make it more accessible to anyone to have an event in the city of Bothell. Okay, there's a lot here, so I'll just go line by line. Our old process had one single application to submit all information at an event at one time. Our new process puts it into chunks. So, you start, I'll walk through the different pieces, but generally, you start by telling us a little bit about the event and we begin discussions with you. You don't have to wait for the permit to be finished. We're actually going to start talking with you earlier in the process. And then we've, we've separated that and then the permit application and then more of the process after that. The old permit process had a threshold of 75 attendees. In consultation with the Parks Department, in reforming this, we're proposing more than 100. Small difference, but it will make a difference as to which events go into park rentals, which are smaller than 100, and special events, which are larger. Applications have been processed by the City Clerk's Office, who has a lot of other things that they do. So, I'm pleased to report that as part of our special event permit process improvements, this process will move to Parks and Recreation. So, it will live right next to the park rentals that they do for events that are smaller than 100 people. It will be next to our event specialists. It will be coordinated by the new volunteer and special event coordinator. So, it is going to where it belongs. That's another improvement that we're bringing. The old process allowed the city to set requirements individually for every event. That may sound like a good idea. That poses some challenges in terms of making sure that we're treating every applicant equally. It also allows every event's details to potentially determine what specifically we're requiring from that. So, in order to make it consistent, we have done a lot of work on the staff side to figure out exactly what formulas we would apply to events and then making those public so that anyone can see what will be required of you to protect safety and sanitation for your event. So, that's what you see as attachment to, is the city's requirements. So, we've done a lot of work up front so that it's not a mystery for event applicants what it is that we're requiring. What we found that in practice, what we have in the requirement chart is what we were requiring of people. So, when an event went through, by the time you were finished with the process, those requirements had been applied to you. We just weren't as clear about putting those up front as we should have been. This is also regionally comparable. So, when we look at cities around us, asking event organizers to pay for necessary services to protect event safety and sanitation is regionally comparable in other cities around us. So, this is based on regional best practices so that we're not out of the norm in that. Okay, so, next one. The way that the last process worked, because there was a single form and you submitted it all at once with all your information, is if the form wasn't complete, we had email you back and asked for more information. If you had submitted some of a requirement, but not all of it, we had to ask for that. If the requirement was clear to the coordinator, but not the department, that was another set of emails. So, every permit went through a really long set of email discussions or phone calls or meetings, but because we need clarity on it, it's much easier to, it ended up being a lot of emails. We have now centralized communication in the new process through the new volunteer and special event coordinator. We will also be doing, and we've already started, monthly special event review team meetings so that all departments involved get together at once with the same pack of materials and make decisions together so that there is a much more predictable process for when your permit will be reviewed and hopefully approved. So, that's some of it. I think in the future, this could be something that would go on to an electronic system. That is not an improvement that we're proposing at this time, just because we wanted to get this up and running as quickly as possible. But I think that will be something that our new person could certainly take on. And it sounds like all of our finalists would have the experience and skills to be able to take it to the next level through something like that. Again, this is building the foundation. I'll address hard barricades and what we had done last year, but in our old system, we needed to find a solution that would safely protect streets quickly. And the way that we did that was using Public Works, staff, and vehicles as hard barricade solutions. This was not sustainable. In our new system, my sincere thanks to Public Works and police for creating a new solution for hard barricades for 2019 that we think will give us a little bit more time to do some long-term planning on this. It will still safely protect streets, but at a much lower cost and impact on staff capacity. So, it's very exciting. In the old permit process, this is, this is in your ordinance, so you'll see it, but Parks events, special events that happen to be located in parks did not pay the special event permit fee. So, if you chose to locate your permit, your event in a park, you didn't go through our process. You still went through the process, but you didn't pay the fee. So, that was strange and also not supported by parks. And so, we've made it much more uniform. If you're a special event, you go through this process. And again, it will be moving to parks, so this will be much easier to coordinate in the future. The last time again, we had the single form, so all events were treated exactly the same, no matter how long or how short or how many few people or how many people, everybody had exactly the same form. One of the things that we've done for better efficiency is distinguish between small and large events, as we had talked about, in both the fee for application review and then also site maintenance requirements have some options based on those. The last one was that in our old process, applicants were allowed to propose their own venues, any venue. So, any, any public property you can think of was open to that. In our new process, one of the policy questions that we're asking council to look at is that we are proposing a limited and approved list of venues where we will be encouraging community events to go to the venues that are designed for events. Those venues are city parks, city park facilities, and festival street. So, I'll address that in some more depth, but those are the ones that were designed for events. So, that is the staff recommendation. Okay, so, just so we get a sense as to the special event organizers' experience, these are the different pieces of our new process. So, you see these attached in your, in your packet. 90 days out, we're looking for an event interest form. This is a save the date form or an event inquiry. We just want some basic information. How, when are you planning to hold an event? How many people? What do you need for it? Do you have an early idea as to what sort of public services would be necessary for your event? And then you send it in. That is approved or denied by the permit coordinator, which is going to be the volunteer and special event coordinator. So, this is an easy form for applicants. It's short. It comes at no cost. So, you just send it in, tell us about your event, So some benefits of the new process to event organizers, one of the biggest ones is clarity on city requirements. I made sure to include the existing special event permit application in your packet so you can see how we had done it in a way that probably worked for many years, but some problematic questions in there. One of, one of my favorites is, did you notify the fire department? Yes or no? It's just a checkbox. That's what we asked on the, on the application. Another one was that the city may impose security requirements, when in fact, the reality was, as it then was vetted by every department, anything that had concerns about crowd density or alcohol being served or signalized intersections being closed had to have off-duty security. So we weren't upfront with that. It just said that we may impose security. So the clarity on city requirements is one of the biggest values. Again, more predictable process for permit application and approval. New, exciting new staff with professional experience in volunteer and special event coordination. So my thanks to the council for your support of that. That, I think, will take this whole process to the next level after we build on this foundation. Team review process for better coordination. So this is an internal process improvement for us, but making sure that we're all in the same room together and can discuss and reduce some of the back and forth and can sometimes crossing paths of emails. And a single staff contact for event organizers to coordinate city response and requirements. So a cleaner, more predictable, more transparent process is the goal of this. The three policy questions that you'll be asked for this, the first one, I've marked each one with a question mark when I reach the end of the information on it in case you have questions. So I'll just review those policy questions before I go further. The first one is, does council approve the proposed special event permit process and associated city requirements? You don't need, I'm not asking for the, until the end, but I'm just telling you that's the first one. So we just finished that section. The second section I'm about to begin is, should event organizers be required to pay the cost of contracted and city services necessary to meet city requirements? Or does the council prefer event costs are subsidized by the general fund? That's the section I'm about to begin. The third section that you'll see is, should the city's Main Street and City Hall Garage be made available to external community organizations for special events? And then the fourth recommended action is approving the ordinance. But those three policy questions all have that slide for discussion at the end. I wanted to let you know that's what the question mark is for. We're at the end of the first one. So that was the content for the proposed special event permit process. Are there questions before I continue or do?
They're completely entertained. Go ahead.
Okay. Onward. So the, this is the discussion now of city requirements and services to provide those. And I am happy to take questions on any of this at any time. I'll cover this next. Okay. The way we started this was to think, what, what do we need for safety and sanitation? And I'll say for those of you with experience in special events, the city has a very small area of interest. It is only those things that protect the public safety and sanitation. So it is not of importance to us what band you book or, or, you know, what entertainers you have or what food is served, who the vendors are, what you say at your event. None of that is our business. The only thing that our process touches are things that are necessary for safety and sanitation. So we start at the, at the level of what do we need at all events? And that is the attachment to city requirements for event safety and sanitation. What happens next is determining, how do we know that those requirements are met? And, and most of those are going to be through contracted services. There is only one item that we would provide by ourselves, which is if an organizer has an event, a large event in a park and decides not to take on responsibility for the area maintenance of bathrooms and garbage. If they choose instead to hire city personnel for that, that is the one time that they would be choosing to reimburse the city for something. Other than that, everything else is a series of contracts. So I'll walk through how those five requirements apply to an event. Only that fifth one has an option of contracting with the city. Everything else is simply a contract with an external organization. So, so this is to say, the way that a person would meet those requirements for an event is mostly contracted services, so that center box. If they choose to use city personnel for site maintenance, it would be an agreement to reimburse the city for those actual costs. And if they don't clean up the site or they need some sort of emergency assistance, there is also the ability for the city to provide those services and then ask for reimbursement. And in a narrow set of circumstances, we could do that. The point of asking for proof of contracted services 30 days out is to make sure that they have that center box covered. So most of the requirements require contracts. So, okay. So these are the requirements. There's only five. Again, there's a wide range of things that go into an event that are not of concern to us. So when a special event permit application comes in, this is what we're looking for. One is off-duty security officers. These are triggered by closure of signalized intersections, crowd density, so size of crowds, presence of alcohol. I think those are the big ones. That sounds right. Closure of a public street. I will address the barricades solution that we've come up with shortly, so I'll explain where that came from. Closure of a public street is about safely closing a street so that a crowd of people can be gathered on it and not be in danger of being hit by a vehicle either intentionally or accidentally. So this has been of primary concern over the last year is to, what kind of solution we could provide to implement safe closures of public streets in a way that is not too expensive for event organizers? Or not, or at this point, our proposal is that the city cover the cost for it for the next year in order to start that, but is also able to be done within existing staff resources. So that has been a continuous challenge. The solution we had in 2018 was not sustainable with staff resources, so we had to come up with something else. The third one is the event organizer needs to provide garbage recycling and organics collection and disposal. So this is trash service for your event. And I will emphasize that all of these are in relation to additional needs that an event generates above that, that the general public imposes on that public area. So you're not paying for everybody in the park that day. You're paying for the fact that you're bringing another 1,000 people into Park at Bothell Landing. That generates increased trash. That generates increased need for portable public toilets. So this is all for that, that incremental need that is generated by an event. So garbage recycling, organics, portable public toilets and hand washing stations. When there are that many people gathered, they need to use the bathroom. So this is a requirement. This is region, all of these are regionally comparable. This is the way that cities around us do it. And then the fifth one is city personnel for site maintenance when an event is in a park. And this is because we do allow event organizers to apply the number of bathroom stalls in a park toward your portable public toilet requirement. If you need 15 porta-potties, there's no reason that you should put that next to six perfectly functioning installed bathrooms and have 21 bathroom stalls operating at that time. We allow you to use city facilities toward, counting toward your portable public toilet requirement, but we do ask that you then pay for that additional site maintenance needs that our park staff will have. So those are the requirements. So when we, there are also requirements, I will say, that are not included here, that are insurance, fire permits, and right-of-way permits. Because those are not something that we are creating, those are already in the code, those are not listed here. But if you bring an event, those are these five, and then insurance, right-of-way, and fire permits are the only things that are our business as to what you're doing in the We did include a cost estimate for city personnel for site maintenance for City Hall Garage, just in case the council did decide to move forward with that. It is not the staff recommendation, but we do have a cost estimate, so you can see how that would apply. So that is included in there, but generally our requirements are those five. Okay. So I'll show you how each of those requirements in sequence applies to a sample event. We're imagining an event on Festival Street. Festival Street is 101st from 185th to Main Street. This is the city's historic location for street festivals. Let's imagine the event is 1,500 attendees, four hours long, with two hours of setup time, two hours of teardown, and most of these events that are this large happen on weekends. So we're assuming that this is a Saturday. Okay. The first requirement is we would review the event will be off-duty security officers. This tends to start around 500 people for crowd density, closure of a signalized intersection, or a stationary road closure. I say stationary because races are actually fair, they're, they're of an impact on public services in a rolling fashion. So we don't put all those 500 people in one spot for four hours. They keep moving. So they don't have the same impacts. Stationary events are the ones that end up getting a lot of these. So stationary road closures will impact off-duty security officers. This does apply to all venues. The requirement increases with crowd size, number of traffic intersections, and presence of alcohol at the event. This is set according to the formula, which is in the attachment two. That's based on the factors shown here. For an event organizer, this results in a contract with PSES, which is Puget Sound Executive Services, or other authorized provider in the city of Bothell. So when we see your event, this is what we're making transparent, is based on these factors, we will require off-duty security officers. So you can calculate ahead of time how many we will need and at what cost that will be. So for the sample event, that would be two officers, one of them for the duration of the road closure and the other one for the duration of the event. So that would be $1,020 for off-duty security. For our sample event, the next requirement is closure of a public street. I will address hard barricades in the next slide, but the only way that this impacts the organizer and the staff proposal is that the organizer is asked to coordinate with a barricade rental company to rent and place no parking signs for 24 hours before the event. So for our sample event, that is estimated to cost the organizer $200. And I'll talk about, so the, the reason there is, the detail that you see in your packet about hard barricades is this has been one of the trickiest issues to find a solution to over the last year. It is an increasing trend in threat assessments, and also you see it in the news that people are going after crowds of people with cars. This is scary and it is our responsibility to try to mitigate for things that we know about that could happen. So in 2018, knowing the urgency of finding a solution, we were using Public Works staff and Public Works heavy equipment at road closures to close roads for private events. This is very expensive. So the city probably spent 10, actually, I know we spent $10,000 in support of Celebrate Main Street. About half of that was the street closure. So to pay for the staff time to be with that equipment is very expensive. And we did an estimate this year for every large event, if we were to cover it with the 2018 solution instead of the one that we're proposing, it would be $3,500 per event just to close the street. And that's both a real cost and a real strain on staff capacity for Public Works streets. As you know, from the most recent windstorm, removing the trees, dealing with snow and ice removal, those are the same folks that were next to Public Works heavy equipment for our street closures. So they have a lot of other things that they're doing, and we want to make sure that we're using their time efficiently. So we are not recommending the 2018 solution. The reason that I've gone into the detail I did on the 2019 option with the vans and the bicycle fencing is that it is an improvement over what we were doing in 2018. So it is much easier on staff capacity and, and much easier to duplicate for multiple events as we need to. So the 2019 solution that we have collaborated across departments to create is bicycle fencing backed up by a vehicle. There's a surplus van and then I think another, there's a box truck at every closure. So we will have a set of two vehicles with bicycle fencing stored inside of them. These can be brought to the event site at the time of the closure. The bicycle fencing can be placed, and then the van can be placed behind it when able. So this will also be coordinated by the volunteer and special event coordinator, but it will provide a, an effective, but much easier to place and maintain hard barricade solution. So it will, it will keep the street safe in a much easier way than we had come up with in 2018. So I'm, I'm proud of that work by the team to come up with that. It also does provide appropriate fire access, and it's something that we felt would be a reasonable solution to keep the street safe while not venturing into very expensive solutions without a lot more planning toward them. As time goes on, we're gonna, we're proposing to do this hard barricade solution for 2019. A couple of options in the future is that some cities will use water-filled barricades effectively as hard barricades or some engineered solutions like Israeli barricades. These are portable, but expensive, difficult to store, and water barricades have integrity challenges with the plastic cracking during freezing or when you're moving them. So the market is not very solid yet for providing solutions for hard barricades that someone could rent. Over time, this may be something that we could change the requirement so that somebody would need to rent a sufficient barricades for a street closure. The market doesn't provide that right now. There are not vendors who effectively rent those. So that's why we came up with our own city solution to keep the street safe in lieu of that. But over time, I mean, in two, one or two years, barricade rental companies may do that more efficiently. So that's an option. The other one is if the council chooses to select, for example, Festival Street as the preferred event venue, that would be easy to start doing some planning, to think about long-term engineered solutions like removable bollards that could be implemented on that street over time. So we could do more permanent solutions over time, but this particular solution allows us to protect events safely in the meantime. So what I have outlined in the proposal is that this proposed solution for hard barricades will cost the city general fund reserve $16,235. We did look at, could that be charged back to organizers? The staff recommendation is simply that there's a lot of other things going on in this, and so we had recommended that that just be something the city take on to be supportive. That is, again, a recommendation to the council. But between the, the lower cost of this solution and the easier impact on staff capacity, we think this is a safe way of protecting any street closure events. So that is hard barricades.
Can we interrupt you for just a quick second? Counselor with you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting till 10:30. We have a couple more items to go through.
I'll second it. So your discussion on the motion. Do you none, raise your hand, say aye if you agree. Pass unanimously. Sorry.
No, please.
One of those rules that are fun. But while we stopped you, what's an Israeli barricade?
They're, they're a very cool solution that Bellevue has, seven of them. It looks like a metal L, but it's very well engineered that any vehicle traveling at speed will actually stop dead in its tracks when it hits it. It high centers the vehicle immediately. So Kemper Properties from Bellevue Square has a set of these that they purchased themselves for the events that happen on their property. And so they have an MOU with the city of Bellevue to allow the city to use them for other things. So these are probably the best in the world right now at hard barricades. I, I think they cost well over half a million dollars for what they have, though. So that's not going to be our solution for a while.
And then what's a bicycle fence?
Thank you. Bicycle fence is a aluminum, like a bike racks. So, go ahead.
So you've seen them everywhere you go, torchlight parade and stuff. It's a metal piece of fencing that stands by itself, and it looks like a bike rack. It's got up and down vertical metal that goes across and it interlocks with the next piece, interlocking with the next piece. So if you were to drive into it, it wouldn't stop you, but it would slow you down. And it allows us to kind of keep pedestrians. Anyone that went to the South Asian Festival down at the park, that's what lined 522 all the way from the crosswalk to the intersection. And it kept everybody, you can't really crawl through it or over it or under it very easily. So it kept everybody on one side of it. And it, it does keep bicyclists and stuff from, from going into there. They're, they're pretty safe. We'll back it with a vehicle so that if you hit that, then you hit the vehicle.
Good, thanks.
Thank you. So city requirement number three is that the event organizer provide garbage recycling and organics collection disposal for the increased needs in this area that are generated by their event. This requirement does apply to all events and venues. It requires sufficient collection containers be done through a contract with Recology. That's one per 300 attendees. Collection containers are rented in sets of three, so every set includes a trash recycle and organics. And again, what this requirement will result in is a contract with Recology to provide this service. So it will provide collection containers. Recology provides community cleansapes, which is a porter service for large events on streets. I'll address how that relates to site maintenance when we get to requirement number five. But for porter service for large events on streets, that is a person that will go through the that is a person that will go through the event and make sure that it's cleaned up and the trash is sorted correctly. Third requirement for this is that vendor... Food vendors use compostable packaging for what they're doing. And we see some compares... This is something that other cities are requiring. Seattle does it, and I believe Lake Forest Park and Issaquah are the other two. And then this is also a requirement for site cleanup to make sure the site and city trashcans on the site are restored to their original condition before you leave. There are many choices in garbage recycling and organics collection disposal. Staff has proposed this hearing council's priority on environmental sustainability and stewardship. So, particularly the compostable packaging requirement was a reflection of your priority in that area and making sure that we're adequately providing for the lowest waste possible at these events and ensuring sorting is done correctly and otherwise. This is a reflect... This was proposed to reflect your priorities. And then this will, again, result in a contract with Recology. So, this is a contract to provide those services. City requirement number four is sufficient portable public toilets and hand washing stations. Again, this applies to all events. This applies differently in a park that has city bathrooms and on Festival Street, which does not have any public bathrooms. Again, most of these events are outside of business hours. So, if you did something during city hall business hours, you could ask your attendees to use the indoor facilities. We're assuming that most special events happen on weekends when the city hall isn't open. So, Festival Street events would need to provide their own portable public toilets. So, it's one toilet per 100 people per four to six hours that they are gathered. For our sample event, that leads to 15 portable public toilets. For every... Among every five that you have, one needs to be ADA accessible. So, it's actually three ADA accessible porta-potties and then 12 standard. And for every five toilets, there needs to be a hand washing station. So, the city park bathrooms, if you do a large event in a city park, that we do have developed bathrooms there. So, you can use those toward your requirement as part of our being encouraging of events to be put into locations that are designed for events. So, this will result for the event organizer in a contract with Honey Bucket or another provider. The sample event, we called Honey Bucket directly and asked what it would be, and that was $1,473 for that. There are different factors for site maintenance. Those that hap... So, the first column is large events on streets. So, for street events, and we have one that is recommended, which is Festival Street, the duties that need to be covered for site maintenance are simply garbage cleanup. So, we... There is no bathroom maintenance requirement for streets because there are no public bathrooms on streets. So, for large events on streets, the duties are garbage cleanup. And the requirement here is actually covered under garbage. And this is to hire one porter for the duration of the event. That would be $59.90 per hour in 2019. So, that allows an event organizer to calculate what it would be. This is lower than the requirement for... And this is one porter, no matter the size of the event, is our proposal here. So, if your event is 3,000 people, it would be the same requirement as 1,500. For large events in parks, on the other side, the duties for site maintenance are more complex. So, that's garbage cleanup and public bathroom maintenance. What we got out of discussions with the Parks Department was that there's really two answers to this. So, one is you can choose to have the city provide that service and reimburse us for it. It's $65 an hour with a four-hour minimum block for the only the hours that the event is active, and city personnel would be on-site to take care of garbage cleanup and bathroom maintenance because large events have a very large impact on public bathrooms. And if you're using public bathrooms to count toward your toilet requirement, that means you're providing less porta-potties than a comparable event would on Festival Street. So, we want to make sure everybody's taken care of. So, you can either ask the city to do it and reimburse the city for it, or some events have very well-organized volunteers. And if that's the case, yeah.
Oh, it's not that you finish this. I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor has a question.
You can also offer to take on the responsibility yourself, so.
I wanted to ask about the four-hour minimum because, for instance, the tree lighting is definitely not a four-hour event. And so, why the four-hour minimum?
I believe that is related to our collective bargaining agreements. I'll look that way at Nick. I believe it's related to our collective bargaining agreements that when you're called out on overtime on the weekends, there's a four-hour minimum.
So, the way the agreement's written right now, it's actually a three-hour overtime minimum.
Okay.
So, we could change that?
We could. I will verify before.
Thank you.
So, I show these two to say, depending on where you place a large event, you have options. If you put it under... If you put it on a street, it would be a single person at that rate. If you put it in a park, it would either be using the city for that service. Or if you choose to take on the responsibility yourself, we will ask for a deposit. But other than that, your deposit would be refundable. So, some events have very well-organized volunteers. This is an opportunity to not... To take on that responsibility yourself and not have to pay for it. And I will clarify in a moment how the sample event would look on Festival Street. I just want to say there was an error in the estimates in your agenda bill. The sample event site maintenance is actually included in its garbage requirement cost. So, it's a little lower than it was shown there. So, if we took our sample event, 1,500 people, four hours long, two hours of setup and tear-down, I'll walk you through how these event requirements apply on Festival Street. And then I wanted to show you what it would look like if you took your same event and put it at Park of Bothell Landing because some things change. They increase, some things decrease. So, a city... So, the off-duty security requirement would actually be the same in either location. And this is because parks require one less off-duty security officer, but Park of Bothell Landing requires northeast closing, northeast 180th Street. So, it's a street closure. So, it nets out the same. Closure of a public street, the only requirement on the event organizer in our proposal is the no parking signs. That's the same in either one. Garbage recycling and organics is higher on Festival Street because it includes the porter service of a person to help with garbage cleanup. The Park of Bothell Landing would simply be the rental of the containers. There would be half as many toilets necessary at Park of Bothell Landing as would be on Festival Street because the park has five bathroom stalls on-site already. Site maintenance, again, Festival Street does not have the park maintenance applied to it. That was an efficiency we found late in the game. So, we can save $780 if your event is on Festival Street. But that or taking on the responsibility by the event organizer would be the requirement for Park of Bothell Landing. So, the subtotal for services, as you can see, is a little lower. And my apologies for the calculation error. So, the subtotal estimate for services necessary to meet the city requirements is $3,281 on Festival Street and $2,875 if you took the same event to Park of Bothell Landing. The application fee is the same regardless of where you put it for the permit application for special events. The site rental fee is different because parks have rental fees for using them, and we currently have a gap in our fee schedule of not having appropriate rental fees for streets. So, that may be something to look at in the interest of fairness in the future. But all park venues have appropriate market comparable site rental fees. So, if you chose to move it to Park of Bothell Landing, you would be paying the appropriate site rental fees, but you'd be paying lower services necessary to meet city requirements. So, the subtotal for fees would be higher for that. So, you can see that it... With the large gap in the site rental fee for streets, it would actually be more cost-effective to put your event on Festival Street. I think that's... I'll back up one slide in case there are questions. And I guess one thing I'll say before we get started is this... I am confident this is regionally comparable, and this is also the system that we have had. And professional and experienced event organizers are used to this. This is what they see in every city. So, we are simply clarifying and bringing it forward, but this... These are the costs that happen. So, if it is not paid by event organizers, then the city will be covering it from something. And that is the $120,000 estimate that I've provided is if the city were to take on the cost of these contracts for outside events. The costs are real. They happen, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Thank you. I really, really appreciate the work that went into this. And I know that you've done a lot of work in getting... Bringing this before us, and you've done a lot of research as well with other cities to see what it is they have. However, I feel it's important for us, and I'd like to make the motion to table this this evening until March 19th in order to give the community some time for them to process it and for them to communicate to us what changes they would like to see. This eliminates Main Street as a possible venue for any events at all. So, my concern is certainly that the people on Main Street originally thought that a lot of the upgrade was to do with really using that street as something that where our community could gather. And that's not possible here. So, I'm... My other reasons for asking this to be tabled is that I feel we should have larger discussion about city and community equity. And I think we need another discussion about what events this actually eliminates. And those are the questions that I have and need time to answer with yourself, the staff, and my community. So, I'm asking this to be tabled till March 19th, and that's my motion.
So, there's a motion to table this discussion until March 19th. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Councilmember Agnes seconds it. Sir, well, you've had some discussion on the motion. Is there additional discussion on the motion? Deputy Mayor?
I'd like to have a conversation before we decide to table. I guess that's my... Why I would vote against it. I feel like we should at least have a discussion before we have that motion. So, I won't be voting for it.
Councilmember Zorn?
I just wanted to ask a clarifying question.
Because we have a motion on the floor, we can't ask staff to interject.
Yeah, so I would like to have a discussion as well because I need some more information before we table it.
Good. Any further discussion on the motion? All right. All those in favor of tabling this discussion until March 19th, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Three to four, so the motion fails. Moving right along. So, we have some questions by the council. So, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I didn't want to keep interrupting, but I had several questions. So, if I read the sample event properly, Mr. Rue mentioned that the Beer Fest last year cost $3,500. Is that for... I don't know if that was for everything, all-inclusive or not, but I'm trying to draw a comparison. If it's the same... Is it comparable in services and whatnot with the $3,956? Do we know?
No. So, that was simply the cost for use of the garage.
Okay. So, their cost actually would go... Would potentially go down if it were on Festival Street and not the garage? In that scenario?
Yes.
Okay. My second question is... So, you said the city costs, if we ate the cost, would be $120,000. Do we have numbers on what we actually spent last year by not charging special event fees? So, we don't know. I had a question about large events on the streets. I forget... I think it's a couple slides back. You had mentioned large event... You were there. Yeah. So, on large events in parks, you had mentioned you could have volunteers and then... And just have a deposit. And if we needed to clean up, then they would be charged, but otherwise not. So, why wouldn't that apply for large events on streets?
So, that option is... Council could apply that to large events on streets if you wish to have the same volunteer option for that. The porter services was recommended because garbage sorting is complicated. And so, both cleaning up the site, setting up the garbage collection containers, helping collect them at the end, and then helping make sure that people are putting things into the right bins was the recommendation from our staff based on your interest in environmental sustainability for events on streets. If you wanted to apply the same ability to cover it with event organizer and volunteers to that, you could. It's simply our recommendation as part of the garbage recycling and organics package that we include the porter service.
I appreciate the work on that. I guess I'm just thinking that it should be consistent. Would be my only comment on that. So, currently, your proposal is that we would not charge for barricades.
Yes, that is the staff recommendation.
And can you remind me again why we wouldn't charge for barricades?
I think the team working on this felt there was a lot of other things going on where event organizers would... Across events would be treated equally and asked to step up the same way. And so, because we are innovating to find a hard barricade solution, we felt this could be something we could take on for a year and then assess it at the end of it and decide if it's something we should continue for further or pursue another route. So, we thought this was something we could do to contribute to the support of events.
And I just wanted to make some comments. I have an understanding of where some of the history is, why this was necessary. I think people may be taking it personally that shouldn't. I know there was an event that caused a lot of consternation, and it was nobody in this room, that made it very, very difficult for staff to react. And because there wasn't a policy in place, it was very difficult to draw lines and boundaries. And so, I want people to understand that in the audience and not necessarily take this personally. There was a root cause for this, and I think it's actually much needed. When you have policies, then everyone gets treated fairly and equally. And I think that's really important when we talk about being a city of equity and inclusion. I do have concerns about the tree lighting. I think there are certain events that... My understanding when we put... When we did the work on Main Street is people envisioned that as a place that could be shut down and that we could celebrate our community on that street. And I... So, I'm very much against not having events on Main Street. I don't know if events can be grandfathered in or what the policy should look like, but I feel really strongly about that. And I'm just wondering if there's not some way, whether it's through LTAC grants or something, where something... Some... An event like that, you know, it's volunteer. It's not... I don't think it's making any money. Is there a way to subsidize that? It's not necessarily coming from the city because anyone who watched this fall, we have budget issues. Is there a way that that could be handled through LTAC? Maybe changing the rules of how they give grants or that sort of thing? I would want to see some way to make sure events that are really important to the community can still stay. And so, that's one of my bigger concerns. Let me just check real quick if I had any other comments. I would really like to know if we do decide to have this come back. I would really like to know what our costs were last year for events and how much we paid. And where did that money come from? Did it come out of general fund reserves? I have heartburn over taking money out of general funds or reserves considering our last conversation about the budget. And this is where it's so hard. No one wants us to raise taxes or, you know, overspend. But when it's their thing, they don't want to be charged more. And it's really hard to make these decisions, you know? don't want to be charged more, and it's really hard to make these decisions, you know. I, it gives me heartburn, honestly, because I, I, you know, council's one of our, one of our priorities is to celebrate community and have community events, and, and make this a, a place where people want to live, and have that, that sense of, as we're growing, we're still, we're still small enough where we know each other, and we pass our neighbors on the street, and that's really important, but things cost money. And so I'm, I'm really kind of struggling with that, so. With that, I will let someone else talk.
Councilmember Zornz?
If I might, I think you still, I think you still have a third part to your presentation, so just so that the council knows that there's still, the third policy question is still to come as part of her presentation, so the, the questions are...
I think we launched into it because we got a motion.
I, I know, so I just, I didn't want...
Okay, thank, no, I appreciate that.
There was still an opportunity for her to present that third part.
Councilmember Zornz had a question for you already, though?
Question, comment?
Or not? If you don't have a question, you can hold...
Well, it is, it is a question, and I've been trying to find, I did not use my highlighter, I used black ink pen, so I don't know if I even marked it off on my reading through this. Save my comments for the end. But did I see something, and I don't know if it was a reference to the way it's been done in the past, or it's being proposed? My under, and tell me if I'm understanding this correct. Is you want to, the, the staff wants to create an inventory so that when somebody has an event that they want to do, you give them the list and say, here's your options. But that does not remove Main Street from the discussion. That's, that is a discussion where you could, did I see that in the text, that a person could go to parks or whoever and say, can I, can we do Main Street? Okay, so I don't know where I picked that information of...
That's part of the question.
Well, that's question three. I'm going to step back, let you continue.
If I may, on the, the staff cost for it, what I can tell you is we did an assessment of only the staff time necessary to review the permits for setting the permit fees for last year, and I believe the staff cost to review large event permits, on average, last year was $4,000. It was something astronomical that we could never make a fee for. So that was just reviewing the applications. That was not actually providing the day-of services. And that, that may be an easier way of thinking of it, is the permit process itself is primarily on reviewing the applications for sufficient information, safety and sanitation requirements, and getting them toward approval. This city, services necessary to meet city requirements are really about day-of services. So it, we do have an estimate as to what it cost us last year to do the application review, and it was staggering. So I do not have the accurate numbers for what specifically were the costs of all the services provided, but they were absorbed within the departments.
Was that $4,000 for each event?
That was the average for reviewing a permit application, yeah. I will find that information, that's the estimate that I remember. I give that as an example that we have done some cost estimating, and the amount of work that was involved just in staff time was a lot. So I, I can certainly bring that back, though. All right, so that's the services required to meet city requirements. So the last policy question for you is that part of our new permit process proposes to offer, as Councilwoman Zornz was describing, a menu of options for event locations. The three options we have right now that we are recommending are City Parks, City Park Facilities, and Festival Street. The two additional options are offered for the council's discussion and direction, so we have a staff recommendation, but if you feel something else is appropriate or reflective of the community, that's why they are brought before you with policy questions. So, but this is our recommendation, and the reason that we have only these three categories as our recommended list of event venues is that these are the places that were made for events. So I've, I've heard, both from the council and from the community, that Main Street, in its improvements, was made for events. It was not. That was not part of the event design. And I'm looking to Public Works in case I'm mischaracterizing it, but that was not part of the event design. So that was also not part of the venue design of the City Hall Garage. So the reason that those two venues have come to you for discussion and direction is that those were not designed for events. So to have events there requires some significant creativity, there's some challenges to the facilities, so I'll lay those out, and then that, that is why that is your third policy question, so that you, you can then give us your thoughts. So the, again, the staff recommendation is not recommended to be offered as part of that menu. Among other things, it is a major transit route. As outlined in your agenda bill, there are some access and slope challenges of a two-block event footprint. So we have offered to the council, if they do wish to not go with the staff recommendation and choose to offer it as a venue that you consider the single-block closure as something that is a little flatter and simpler, but we generally don't recommend it. The largest thing that I wanted to point out, and I have a map that I will pull up, is space constraints. So something about Main Street that is challenging is how little space there is. So just to bring this up, and thanks to our GIS folks, this is, we've created site maps as templates to help event organizers better give us their site maps in 2019. So I asked them to go ahead and make one for Main Street, just so we could get a sense of the layout and what's there and, and not there. So, among other things, you'll notice that the shaded areas are the flex zones. So one of the features of the Main Street redesign is the opportunity for businesses to use the flex zones for sales or outdoor seating. If these flex zones are successful, which they hope they will be, you will notice a large piece of the street surface will actually be taken up by individual private uses from businesses. So if you chose to offer an event on Main Street, you would need to work around all of the flex zones, is one challenge. The second challenge is that then with the remaining space on the street, by the time you give fire access, you've restricted the event to perhaps a series of tents along one lane. But it, it's actually much smaller as an event footprint than other areas. This is a reason that we have recommended Festival Street, both for the fact that it's the historic location of street festivals, but also there's a lot more flexibility, there's a lot more space, you can do a lot more with it than you can necessarily here. So this is a challenge of this particular location that we're bringing for the council's consideration, and again, there is the staff recommendation on that. And then finally, the City Hall Garage was a location of the Beer Festival due to some weather concerns. And I, I want to give some specific thanks to the chamber for being a good partner in creativity, in trying to figure out how to make this unusual facility work for an event venue. We have brought this forward as a challenging venue that we do not recommend to be offered on that list for several reasons. And again, this, laying out our facility challenges does not speak to sort of the quality of the event, or the organizers, or their partnership. We're speaking here as relation to the city as a property owner, and what happens when you have a party somewhere that's not designed for a party? So the things that we've brought here, some of them are concerns over air quality and monitoring. There is not an HVAC system in that garage, so when you assemble large groups of people, it's not monitoring for gases that might be of concern, it's not switching on air ventilation if those levels reach unacceptable levels like they do indoors, so that's a problem. There is concern over access and adequate exits. So if you imagine yourself somewhere in the parking garage with 300 people around you, and again, I'm, I'm, I am speaking as to this use as a venue for any event, so I know we have experience with the Beer Fest, but we have heard inquiries from others who want to know if they can use the garage for similar events, which is why we bring the question to you. So concern over access and adequate exits, exposed sprinkler system, and I'm going to consult my notes here. It's actually an exposed conduit, fire sprinkler system, and other systems are all exposed in the ceiling of the garage, and once you start looking for this, you'll never unsee it. So when you walk back to your car tonight, you can see it. Limited ventilation and HVAC, lack of drainage and disposal systems. There aren't places to throw anything out in the garage, or if you, you know, poured a bottle of water out, it's not going to go anywhere, it's going to sit there. So if you spill your beer, it's not going to go anywhere, it's going to sit there. If there, I mean, there, there aren't places to dispose of things in there. Unlimited ingress and egress, lighting limitations, so we have safety lighting in there that is LEDs, if I recall correctly, that is set up for car, the safety of a car storage facility and its occupants. So it's bright. You can't dim it, you can't do anything else to it, and for, for making it useful for an event, it would be better for an event if you could cover it, or otherwise, that doesn't work for our needs as a garage, so that's also in conflict. One of the biggest challenges of using that particular venue is that it uses the largest supply of free city downtown parking for an event that will also probably require a lot of free city downtown parking. So as that's one of the best things we have, is that the city owns this large parking garage, that then poses a challenge for event parking. It also has the potential for very costly damage. Again, that venue was created for car storage, and people going to and from their cars. So when we made it, we didn't think of events, and, and we have been very creative, and our partners at the chamber have been very creative, but the staff have brought this forward as a challenging facility for your consideration not to include on that list. The specific question that we have is should Main Street be offered to the public as an event venue, and should City Hall Garage be offered to the public? Because our new process has that menu of available venues that you can choose from. Our recommendation is not to include it on that menu, but that is the specific question that we're asking the council. And I think that's the end of my third policy question.
Okay, is there any more questions? On that one? Councilmember McNeil?
Mr. Mayor. You showed a map of Main Street, the, what would be available for an event. Do you have a map available for Festival Street?
I do, and not in that, if you give me a minute, I can send it to myself from my laptop.
Okay. Well, I've got a couple more questions.
Okay.
So the, is it my understanding that Beer, the Beer Fest used to be on Festival Street, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And has that festival grown in size, or is it about the same?
The, the last attendance figures were 1,500, and I believe from our discussion that it has grown in size over time.
Okay. And when you mentioned the air quality in the garage, what, what does that mean?
If I may.
All right, so the HVAC system in our garage is set up for, to monitor vehicle exhaust gases and not occupancy gases, so that you, we can have a buildup of the occupancy gases with extra people being in the, in the parking garage.
So if there's a couple hundred people in the parking garage, I mean, there's, is there cars in the parking garage also, or is it just people in the parking garage?
No, the, the, the vehicles are, are moved to the lower levels.
Lower levels, okay. So there wouldn't be vehicles driving in and out?
Yeah.
It would just be people in there, right?
Correct.
And so, there's no way to monitor the levels of oxygen or something, or...
Correct. The CO, the CO2 levels, we're, again, we're only monitoring the exhaust gases for vehicles in the parking garage, as it's designed as a parking garage. In the spaces here, we're monitoring CO2 levels and, and other levels that are for occupancy.
Okay, so I'm, I'm trying to, I may be asking strange questions, but I'm trying to wrap my head around this, and I want to make sure that I'm careful here. So if I'm in that garage at the Beer Fest, and the oxygen levels are bad, poor, we're not going to know that, is that correct?
Correct.
So that, to me, sounds like it's not a safe environment for, for people to be having a festival.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, but the, the exhaust fans do run continuous?
Okay.
And the, the garage doors are open ventilation, but it's not monitoring or ramping up based on occupancy levels.
Okay, so would we have to install some additional equipment or something to be able to monitor that?
Yes, there'd be additional monitors that need to be, additional sensors, monitors, reprogramming of the HVAC, or of the exhausts, to monitor those levels.
And would that, is there any idea what that would cost, or...
I don't have that number.
Okay. All right, thank you. You had mentioned the Main Street fire access. The fire access that's, that's going to be required on Main Street, would that be required at all venues?
Yeah.
So it'd be required at Festival Street as well?
Mm-hmm.
It would be required in the parking garage?
Um, no.
No, it wouldn't have that same requirement in the parking garage. We can't get our vehicles in there anyway.
Okay, so the requirement for, for fire access is, what, what type of, what, what type of access is that for?
I believe it's 10 feet clearance we need to get for the engines to get through, the large apparatus.
Okay, so if there was an incident in the garage, what would happen?
We would have to just take a lot of handle lines in there, just like any garage. We, we make plans for that to extend off the engine, we'd park it outside, it's, it's a height clearance, obviously, in the garage.
Okay, and so that, would that be for like some kind of a fire incident, or would that be for a medical incident?
Both. We would want to, we, I don't think we could take the aid car in there either, I think the clearance is too low, so we would just send the firefighters in with the gurney.
Okay, and then the, the Festival Street access would be, was that greater access on Festival Street?
The requirements would be the same, but I don't, it's still about 10 feet is what we need.
Okay.
I think so. This should be, this is an earlier sample map of how an organizer might use this to show Festival Street. So you can see here, I believe Festival Street with the parking freembo sides is 37 feet across, so you may have more options for fire access than you would under Main Street with the limitations on the parking on the side. Let me zoom out, what this is.
So it looks like in that, in that map, you have like a 10 to 15-foot swath running through there?
Through the middle.
Through the middle? And that, and the FTs would, what do the FTs represent?
This was a sample site map.
Okay.
So the FTs...
Like a tent or something, or...
Yeah. Food truck.
Food truck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
This was an exercise to see if we could, we've made some new maps through GIS as efficiency for the event organizers to try to get us all in the same spot, so this was that exercise.
Okay, fabulous. Okay, thank you. And then, you had mentioned $4,000 per review that caught my attention on the permit, the application?
Yeah.
Is that, am I, did I hear you right on that?
Yeah, we had done some cost estimating for the cost of city staff time necessary to review small event permits and large event permits as we prepared for the 2019 fee schedule that you approved last December. The numbers we ended up estimating were far lower than the true cost of providing those services, because there is, that, that's not feasible. I, I share that information as a way of saying we have done some estimating of staff time, but it is a lot. So the, the $4,000 is the combined hourly rate of each person that reviews these permits, and how much work they put into them, all put together from a permit from submission to completion. So part of our process improvements for this was to try to find a way to streamline that, to make it much faster to get through the process, and not have as much back and forth. That high number reflects the amount of back and forth, both with organizers and the coordinator, that every person in each department was doing.
Okay, so the, the new process would eliminate...
Yes.
...or reduce the 4,000...
Yes.
...greatly?
Yes.
Okay, but the overall cost for the, the permit review would be covered by the permit fee?
Now, it will be.
Now it will be covered?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it's cost recovery, recovering what the cost would be?
Now it is, yeah.
Okay. And then, okay, I think, I think that answered all my questions. Actually, I did have one more. So the, on Main Street, it wasn't designed for events. I heard, I heard you mention that, but the, at the ends of Main Street, if I'm, I'm going to Kirkland for a se, for a second. Kirkland has a similar street, and they have bollards that they're not permanent, but they're temporary, where you put them in at the end. And I think I heard Captain Johnson mention something about, or maybe it was you that mentioned something about bollards. Is, is temporary bollards an option, not, not just for Main Street, but for any event, where we, we could have temporary bollards on different festivals or whatever?
I, I may, if you don't mind, ask Public Works Director Lenhart to address this. She has the best explanation about the bollards question.
So bollards need some, some receiving sleeve, essentially, so that needs to be constructed. So when we've talked about Festival Street, for example, Main Street, we just, we just rebuilt it, and it's a concrete road, and so it'd be very complicated to add those sleeves into the existing Main Street. Festival Street, however, it's asphalt, so it would be a little bit easier, still would require some planning and, and cost estimating, and we, we could propose that as part of the capital plan next go-around.
But it sounds to me like there would be a cost associated with making it safe...
Yes.
...for the public?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Zornz?
Okay, so I'm back. The garage, as you're listing off the issues that are going on with it, I'm, I'm adding my caveats to it, security, having eyes that can look in all the corners. So the garage is a hard sell for me. So the garage is a hard sell for me. Main Street, in December, all those spaces that are opened back up, and I don't see that as much an issue when we talk about the Christmas tree lighting. My question is, for something like Main Street, can we put a population threshold? Like if you're going to have, if you have an anticipated crowd of 3,000, then Main Street would be open for you as an option? Could we do something like that?
That, that would be up to, yeah, if you think there's some criteria that would make sense for that.
It would make it, to me, if you put a population threshold of using Main Street, that, somebody picking that off the list is, is going to be much less likely when it's a smaller, a smaller big event. But I think it's really important that we find a way to make Main Street available. I think the neighbors, the whole city will rise up in arms if we don't have Main Street as a, a touch point year-round. And, but also along with that, subsidizing it, I would love to say, you know, you're talking about the city absorbing costs. I don't think the city has that luxury right now. And so in the council discussion of subsidizing some of these events, we don't have that luxury. So I would, I could not support that right now. You know, in a few years, that could change, and let's do that. The idea of putting bollards in, putting that, you know, on the wish list down the road makes great sense, but I would like for us to find a way to, to make Main Street an option for the big events that Bothell looks forward to every year. So that's, I think, this, my, the sum total of my points. So it's a, you know, you guys, if you think that we could assign a threshold to it, and that would make it Main Street workable, but not as an abused option, then let's do it. Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Can I weigh, can I weigh in first, real quick?
Oh, definitely.
Okay. Because I, so I voted no on tabling this, because I did want to hear the complete presentation, and I wanted the council to have an opportunity to ask questions and stuff. But I'm okay with, I think you had great ideas, reasons why you wanted to, to wait on this decision or, you know, until March 16th. But I'm ready to give some feedback on the three, the three questions, so I can just do that now. And then if you guys wanted to make that motion to table again, I think you have a majority. But, so does council approve the proposed special event permit process associated city requirements? I am a yes on that. Should event organizers be required to pay the cost of contracted and city services? I think that is important. That's, I don't know, I always say we have very specific services we provide our community, and one of them I don't think is contributing financially. Well, we do contribute financially, there's 16,000 proposed barriers, as well as an FTE in the Parks Department, so I think that's something the city's bringing to the table. And then should Main Street and City Hall Garage be made available? I'm not feeling really good about the City Hall Garage, but I do think Main Street should be available as a, as a play, a space for events. Okay, sorry. Just in case I'm not here on the 16th or something like that happens.
No, it's the 19th, I believe.
Okay. Oh, City Manager?
It just, it's very difficult for us to bring something back that includes a community process by March 19th, that's not possible.
Okay.
So you're going to need to, if you make a motion to extend, please give us more time, and I would suggest May.
Mm-hmm.
May or June, we, it's just, because we have a ramp-up time, we have to rewrite the staff report, we have to schedule the meetings, we want to give enough time, so we'll need some time to bring this back.
So Mr. Mayor, if I may, and I'm sorry I interrupted your presentation, I thought you were completely done when you asked for questions, so I wouldn't have done that. But I, I do want, again, to move to table, and I, with all due respect to the city manager, I would move that you would recommend to us when you could bring it back, is that satisfactory? And I'm going to, again, go through my reasons. I received this information on Friday. The community has not seen it. I've been through Main Street, I've talked to different people, they have not seen it at all. They were reading it today, so I'm trying to give them some time to really process it. I respect all of the questions that you have had tonight, and I think that there's some very important points you make about using Main Street, about maybe not having the garage, but I think that all of these things need to be examined by all of us, and we should have some time to, to kind of process it and, and add or subtract and see what we can do and hear from the community. So with that, I do move that we table it until an appropriate time that the city manager can bring it back.
Second. So it's moved and seconded to table this discussion till TBD, is that, okay. Any discussion on the motion? Deputy Mayor?
My only concern is that we have something in place before things start coming to us for the summer event season. To lose another year and have staff be scrambling and trying to, to do things that kind of are outside of their scope, and for the city to continue to eat costs is a real concern for me. Hopefully, the city manager can find some time earlier than May, because I think it would be unfortunate if, if we didn't have something in place. People who don't have, if we don't have policies in place, then people tend to believe that everything's negotiable. And we found that out last year, to the detriment of our staff. So that's something to think about.
Any further discussion on the motion? No. All right, seen none. If you want to table this item, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Pass, oh, wow, okay. Pass unanimously, so we are now... Sorry, just going to scroll, scroll, scroll. Okay, there it is. Executive session pursuant to RCW 4330-1101G, public employee performance review and potential litigation pursuant to RCW 4230-1101I. Do we need any more time than 10:30? We'll just have you come out from executive next then. All right. We're being executive session.